You can point out any typos or things that you'd like to change. April 17?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, any discussion? So Ellen has already given Trish a few typos to correct.
Is that just for the 17th? Or, okay, all right.
Were those just like, just typos, not changing the content? Okay.
We're gonna talk about May 1st also.
Yes, definitely. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from April 17th?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I'll take a motion for May 1st. If anyone wants to make one.
I'll make one.
All right, good job Nancy.
Getting there.
Do we have a second? All right, Nancy and Ellen, any discussion?
May 1st?
Yes.
It's not the Backyard Gazette, it's the Door Yard Gazette. On the last page.
Any other changes? Okay. All in favor to approve the minutes as amended?
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. We are on to public comments.
Greg Woodmore, North Road. So one of the tour last meeting, and I want to talk about what I saw on that. So, DCS has huge classrooms, enormous classrooms, especially compared to other schools. Now, I never heard there was not enough room for the kids in relation to the size of classrooms, which also very small class sizes. So that really doesn't seem to be an issue whatsoever. What I did hear was, we don't have enough room for our stuff. Now, if I were to go home and go down in the basement today and look around and say I had too much stuff, I wouldn't expand my basement. I get rid of some stuff. All right, a perfect example of this is the first grade hallway. There's book cards in the hallway. You telling me those can't fit in the classrooms? We can't rearrange them, we can't get rid of unnecessary items to fit these things in the classrooms? I find that crazy. I run a classroom, I have a certain amount of space, and it's a lot less space than we have here, by the way. And, you know, if I didn't have room for my stuff, I just, I just wouldn't have. So we really need to start thinking what's necessary and what's not necessary. As far as making more space in the building, I would make the following suggestions, and I know that a number of these have been sent to you by email already from other residents in the town. So, how about we take the music rooms condensed down to one? Or take the art rooms condensed down to one? How about we combine the kindergartens? Consider moving the preschool out of the building, possibly to the George B. White Building. Just these moves alone could get the students out of the trailers. We get the students out of the trailers, now we can talk about specialists, interventionists, psychologists, et cetera. So, once we have the kids out of those buildings, these adults could go out into the trailers. Because again, having little kids walking back and forth from a trailer to a school building with a key to the building is not safe. It's never going to be, right? It doesn't matter that nothing's happened in the past, we don't look at potential threats that way. We look at what could happen, right? So that really needs to be addressed. As far as all these extra bodies, I'd really like to know when all these specialists, psychologists, et cetera, when exactly were these positions created? Are they all necessary? I understand that some of them were in response to COVID. And if that's the case, do we still need them? Were they initially started with grant funding? And when that grant funding ended, were they just rolled into the school budget? That would be really useful information to get out to the public. So really what we're looking at is the school board's gearing up for another expansion push. Now, the last vote was a monumental decision against expansion. And it seems like what Deerfield residents really just want are realistic repairs as needed, not expansions costing tens of billions of dollars. I mean, even the drafting of an expansion plan, I assume, is very expensive. So I'd be curious, how much was spent preparing the last one? And where did that money actually come from? Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay. We will move on to agenda review. It's a very long agenda, so I will spend not very long on the agenda review. Just there, I did want to point out the typographical error, we are missing 10 and 11. There's nothing secret happening for those numbers, we just missed them. And we do need non-public, I believe. And I think that is it. Anything else that needs to be added? No. Okay. Review of correspondence. You know, I do think there was an email missing that I should have remembered, but Greg just prompted me to remember it. It was from Leah about different ideas for space. I don't know if it was to me or to everyone. But we'll get that one added. Yeah, we'll get that one added to the minutes. And then we got an email today from Kevin Furville about his opposition to us hosting, having a special election for the para-contract. Is there any questions or comments about that email? I will say I did respond to him this afternoon. Asking him, we're gonna talk more about the special election later, but I did respond to him this afternoon, asking him some clarifying questions. But I think that's it for review of correspondence. Nothing for consent? Okay, we are gonna move the board reports, I should have mentioned this earlier, we're gonna move the board reports down to under immediate business, just so we can get some of our guests who are here out earlier. So we're gonna move on to immediate business, and we are going to start with the art curriculum. Yes, if you would like to join us up here, that'd be great.
Oh, okay, perfect. Do you want to just drive it, Kristen? I can probably do both. Oh, well, no, actually, maybe I can't, that looks. I'm gonna change, change. All right. I wrote a little script because I just figured it would be easier, and we have the art curriculum up, the latest version. So, our last art curriculum had major updates in order to accommodate the core arts standards as well as competency-based grading. Since that time, there's been no significant changes to the standards or competencies, so consequently, our updates to the curriculum are pretty minor. And we tried to be super thoughtful about them. So, if you, yeah, if you want to scroll down, Kristen, to, there's a blue highlight right there, perfect. So the first thing we did is, we added a statement to the art mission statement on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's taken directly from the NAEA, which is the National Art Education Association. And it's from a statement that they made in March 2022 about DEI. So we just added that right in. Acknowledge visual art education as a cultural and social responsibility in which we collaboratively explore, respond, respect, and react to the values, practices, and beliefs of cultures in a complex and multifaceted society. So, you know, given the nature of our world today, we thought that was pretty important to include. The next thing, you can move on to, pretty much like, like the last page. So all of this is the same, all the standards are the same, all our, everything is the same. The next thing we added, and I am so embarrassed by this, I'm just gonna own this right away. We never cited anything in our original curriculum, I don't know what we were, I don't know why, I don't know how we missed that. So we have cited everything with the sources that we have used to create this curriculum, which include Elliot Eisner, Arts in Creation of the Mind, Karen Ernst, Picturing Learning, Nancy Shute's very familiar with that, I believe. Again, that statement, the position on DEI, and the National Core Arts Standards and Teaching for Artist's Future. Have a redrawn core art curriculum. So there's that. And then finally, this is the biggest thing that we've added in, is an appendix. And so, we added an appendix because I did some work last year with some accreditation teams for a couple of New Hampshire colleges. And through that work, it really became apparent to me that it was super important to have systems so that programs kind of can continue on when people are gone, like that's just a reality of our world. And there are a bunch of things that don't really belong necessarily in the bulk of the curriculum, but are kind of curriculum adjacent, if that makes sense. And so, that work just led me to be like, we need to have something somewhere with this information. And so that programs can carry on when people are no longer here. So it includes really super specific Deerfield items, like our sketchbook journals, why we have them, who our vendor is for them, the fact that the art teachers prepare the displays for the Deerfield Fair, and who that contact information is, like that's very, again, very Deerfield-specific thing, doesn't really belong in the curriculum, but it has to do with us and our jobs. And so it felt like it was important to be in here. In addition to that, I think we have some stuff about the school-wide art show, and then also just budgeting and ordering. This is sort of a place where I can see us adding to as we continue to realize, like, oh, this is something that might be important to be in here. So again, it's not, it's curriculum-adjacent, you know what I mean? But I felt like it needed to be in a place, if that makes sense. And I think that's, that's, that's it. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same since it was last approved.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
Can you go back up to the top, the social piece that you added, which is great, I appreciate that. But it is followed right after by the art program, and then you come back to the very end, like at the adjacent piece you were just talking about, those sketchbooks. The choice model shows up in a bunch of places.
Yeah, that's all in here.
Which is awesome, right? So that's great, and that's a valuable part of the program, the curriculum. How does the balance work between this piece that you're adding here about like, a new piece that's going to be, I would say, pervasive throughout all the curriculum, but also the choice be like, if, how can choice coexist with, you know, telling kids they're gonna be sort of learning this thing? Can you just speak to how that may be the balance works?
This is just acknowledging that the arts are, have a social responsibility, that's all that is.
But, but, but is there room for still, for children to not choose to take that path in their creating of art? Or is that a, is it a piece that's gonna pervade all of your classes, or is it going to be sort of a by-choice kind of a thing? Or is that, am I?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry Nate, I'm not really sure what you're getting at.
I may not be asking the right question.
I, I mean, I feel like choice and being socially responsible coats this together beautifully, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you're getting at.
So part of this is, is in this, the blue part here, there is education as, so here, in which we collaboratively explore, respond, respect, and react to the values and beliefs of cultures in a complex and multifaceted society. That seems to me to imply that there's an instruction happening. Am I misinterpreting?
No, I mean, I, it, it, it's just the way we teach. Yeah, I mean, I think it's embedded in how we teach, I think that's a great way to say that, Holly. Especially in terms of things like responding and connecting, which are two of our competencies. Students are already doing that, I think we just felt it was important to add that in. Just that, like, I think we've always been doing it. Does that make sense? I just think we've never like explicitly put that DEI piece in, and I think we put it in as reaction to what has been happening in the world around us.
And I think that's valuable, and I'm glad that we've been doing it all along.
Right.
But my question is the, is, are there ways that students can choose? I don't, I guess maybe my question is more about the choice model. Does the choice model mean that students can choose not to participate in that? Not to engage with that kind of awareness and increasingly understanding the world around us?
No, because the choice model is all about students, students choose the, they're choosing the artwork that they are creating, they're not necessarily choosing whether or not they're responding to things. Like we have critiques and stuff in place for them to respond and connect. And so I think that that's maybe where, like.
Also, in the art, a lot of your lessons that you do at the beginning, you reflect that by the artists that you're showing, when you talk about it, the discussions.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
That's not part of their choice.
Okay.
Yeah, the choice is really when it comes, yeah. The choice is really where, when they're choosing to create, like, somebody might decide, like, we might do a lesson on portraiture, and somebody might decide that they want to do that portraiture lesson, but then there's another student who's been working on a landscape and they've been painting it. And so they're choosing to continue with that, so that's where that choice is. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes more sense. Thank you.
All right, yeah, no problem.
I think it's great.
Yeah, very true.
That's really very, very helpful, because that happens a lot where a teacher leaves and all of a sudden he'd say, well, how come you're not doing such and such anymore?
Will that piece can, this wouldn't be to you, would that last part maybe start to appear in other curricula as well as we start to see them?
I, I think so, it's, who started, somebody mentioned, it was at CRB.
Discussion about it with the music curriculum, and then there was a little bit of pushback, but I think we had to go through that. Not every little thing that you do, we're just talking about big things, that if somebody comes in, like, I think of it from science, like we used to have a science fair. That might have been something in the science fair. So it's just the kind of big, the big deals, or, or you're, I love the idea that you're helping where you can find stuff too, if that's what it is.
Yeah, and just like, yeah, like, really, and like specifically, like, I don't know that an art teacher would necessarily come in and know that they were responsible for hanging all the, like, the fourth grade projects from fair and the sixth grade projects, right? Like, that's not, that's not like a common thing, so it's an important thing for them to understand.
But it doesn't have to be like, oh, we do this field trip, because that's up to teacher aside, field trip they might want to do, so it's like bigger things.
Yep.
I still have my sketchbooks. So I used to go to art with my kids, I guess.
Any other questions, comments?
Or the semantics thing, was this approved by the CRB? We sort of had that talk, did the CRB have a vote or anything like that?
We did not have a vote, and so remember the last meeting when we talked about it, it was the first time, and we haven't had CRB since then, so.
Okay.
There were, there were, there were proofreaders who read it and found a couple of things that we, you know, a couple of typos that we fixed, but there was no other, there was no other feedback of it.
Okay. And as you said, it's not a major overhaul anyway, so, you know. Okay.
Okay.
One comment, it's not so much about the curriculum, but the program. For Deerfield, there's so many things that we don't offer our kids, we don't have shop, we don't have home ec, we don't have those kind of things. The things we have, what I believe, are very strong IA, the art program, the music program, the PD program. And just as we move forward, to me, it's very important that we don't go backwards with what we offer our students, because there's things that we already can't offer. And I know many schools, other small schools, don't offer, you know, the home ec and the things like that. But I just feel Deerfield is so fortunate to have the strong programs that we do, and it reflects in the curriculum, it reflects in what we see in this building. So, thank you for that.
Can, while I have experts here, can you just remind me or educate me on how often kids are having art? And if it differs by grade?
Right, and actually, it, this year, this year it doesn't differ by grade. Sometimes it does. This year it is twice, once every three days, actually. So because of the A, it's, what is it, A through F day, but we see students, A days, D days, B days, E days, C days, F days. So, so it's, yeah, once, once every three days, twice every six-day rotation, so either two, two or one day a week, depending on the week.
And that's the entire year.
And that's the entire year, and the really nice thing I have to say about the rotation is that if we have, because it's not Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you're not always missing, you know, the Monday kids because of Monday holidays or whatever. Or if there's snow days, like, oh, we've had four Tuesdays, snow days, because it just kicks right back up. Like, if it was supposed to be a C day, we have a snow day, the following day is a C day. So we never miss them, which I think adds for better equity across the board, instead of, you know, those instances where you have that Monday class.
Got it. I'm not, I will, I'm not knowledgeable about the cycling. My daughter's starting kindergarten though, in the fall, so I'm gonna learn quickly. But it's very, it seems confusing to me now.
There are 45 minutes left, folks.
Okay, perfect. All right, anyone else have any other questions? Comments? Okay, I will make a motion to approve the art curriculum as presented. Nate, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See you soon. All right, we will move on to the wellness curriculum. Welcome.
Russell Young is our, I don't, I don't know, Holly Kim and Sarah Chase, I know most people know the, you have a few new members. Holly is new to us this year, so just wanna make sure your names are mentioned before you head on out. And Russell Young, our wellness.
Great, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, the floor is yours.
The Deerfield Community School Wellness Curriculum. Since 2018, I think a few differences or changes have been made, specifically, I would give you with, if you scroll down just a notch. The last time, 2018, seventh, eighth grade are mixed classes, so it's in them at the same time. So those sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, which I need, have twice a week, similar to what Sarah was saying. So each of those classes have their own competencies, and those have been divided, we could see how they're along. So I have to say that's probably the biggest change since 2012.
So those used to be all together, and now they're separated by grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so I have, and I have them all, all year. Yeah, I would have to say that's, that's pretty much, I mean, it's a significant change when it comes to instruction and community access. And right here, the scope and sequence kind of breaks it down, which is, which is nice. And not unlike what Sarah and Holly said and alluded to, you know, should the, another health educator step in, like, oh, okay, six grades, we covered. So. Yeah, and so like, for example, on the report cards, each has its own competency. Minimum of two. But yes, that's, those are probably the boldest changes. And something that I don't believe was included, K through five, since 2018. So I think it's, of course, noteworthy, as it's stated up there, that, you know, a being a health educator for just a middle school, six, seventh, eighth grade, K through five teachers have the opportunity to address each of these competencies. The same thing with PD as well, which I'm actually doing a bridge on both.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, Nate.
Russell, are you still, just part-time?
I'm seven-five, yeah.
Okay, all right, so with not being full-time, are we able to meet like the state guidelines and stuff, or are we just having you part-time?
It's, that's the challenge, that's the challenge. I would say, yes, it has to do with also, of course, with the depth of, you know, like every teacher has the, that challenge of, you know, quantity, quality. Yeah, that's another one, challenge, and I was reminded during the CRB discussions with younger grade teachers taking up a sizable chunk of that responsibility to do so. I might say, maybe not a hard yes.
You mentioned here the national health education standards, most of this comes from those national standards. Is, do the state standards line up reasonably well with those national standards?
Yes.
They're all kind of the same thing basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Other questions?
Yeah, there was also, there was something about, I think it was in this one, about responsive classroom, did you have that? Is the staff still being trained in responsive classroom?
Yes.
We, we call it community circle because responsive classroom costs thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
And we have plenty of staff that have received advanced training. So we run our K to five morning meetings through, with a responsive classroom approach, we call it community circle. And then all of our magnets and advisories also run their, their advisories and magnets with a greeting and an activity and a shared time in a, with that agenda. It'll look a little different in magnet and advisories, but it's still the same structure.
Thanks.
And we do meet a lot of these competencies, the health and wellness, especially the recognizing individuals exhibit responsible personal and social behavior. Is, a lot of that is covered, as well as a lot of their other competencies, reading and writing, you know, with speaking and listening and.
Can I ask, how difficult is it for you, like you're, you're working off of a card coming into the classroom?
He has a clothus?
That, you know, for me personally, my personal approach to instruction, you know, I love it to be interactive. You know, lots of, you know, I refer to them as labs, where, you know, you're like performance-based. So that's, that's really.
It's hard, I remember when you had your own classroom, when you had a stage, you know, things like that, yeah.
So, you know, it's learning how to allow students' voice, and how can we make this a valuable experience?
Russell teaches a lot of his classes in the cafeteria when he's able.
The cafeteria, music, math.
Tech lab, the sun lab, you go up in there. He's not afraid to squat in somebody's room.
Well, and, you know, with respect to, I think that's the very end of it, when it refers to technology. You know, to be completely honest, it's not a strong part of my instruction.
How could it be? On a cart.
It lends itself to, you know, where we're kids are when it comes to using technology. So it's a professional development. I think for me, it's quite opportunistic to take it very much back to. There isn't anything quite like seeing students respond in real time and react, and hence the theater approach. I think it's basically important.
Not, you know, since you don't have your own space, and not that most of our education comes from posters or like educational things on the wall, but do you think there's anything missing? Because you don't have sort of that kind of material available to students, like. Because you don't have sort of that kind of material available to students, like, I don't know what. I just, I remember thinking back to like my wellness, and there was like things that you could reference, like the food pyramid or whatever, you know? That you saw every day, do you, and it's not, I mean, directly related to them, but do you think that there's any sort of loss there? Because you don't have your own space.
I, I think it might be. Overused when people talk about, is it, you know, what is a safe space to be in? With that stage, I think, to work towards having a reverence for that space. And I'm sure in Melissa and Michael's space, that exists, but something that you can count on. Like, you're in that room and students will be able to fly to, that's, that's how we are, that's what we do. I, yeah, that's, that's really important. But at the same time, I, you know, I get to role model.
Adaptability.
Oh, and that was, I was gonna say, to Nancy's point about I Ks and woodworking and sewing. Things that I have experienced with when, when I was a student, that, you know, you get to see everything from a different perspective. I think health and wellness lends itself to get those hands-on types of things. So, yeah, it's rolling. So it tends to collaborate. So, yeah, worth of progress, but that's the, those, the bones, I should say.
Cool, any other questions, comments?
I think he does a good job with the amount of work he needs to do, I mean, it was nice when he had that ear. Do you have a real more than, like, I remember you were up in that room one year, and then I think you were downstairs in one of the small rooms. But I think you've been out of a classroom more than you've been in a classroom, so.
I think, I think it was my first four years, I had, when I was here, I was in the modular.
Okay.
Had no idea how good I had it. No idea, you know, so, yeah.
But thank you, because it's not an easy situation to be in.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the wellness curriculum as presented. Bren Ellen, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming.
I kind of follow up with a somewhat unrelated, maybe different topic, but also related. I don't think I had realized that we are not officially like paying for the responsive classroom training, or is that not exactly true? And if that is true, should we be printing things that we're using responsive classroom techniques if we're not officially?
Well, we pay for individual people who want to go to responsive classroom training, we just, to get the whole school, all the staff trained, it would be thousands.
Yes.
It's like to up, up to ten thousand.
Yeah, no, I'm sure that is the case.
Or did you see something with their, I mean, I always tell people, responsive classroom doesn't own greetings, you know?
Right, okay.
They don't own a group activity.
Okay.
You know, camps and, so, we don't, I don't think we name responsive classroom necessarily.
Okay, well, in the document here, it says we're implementation of responsive classroom techniques.
Oh, okay.
It's in the document we just approved.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's, I, I guess that's a, I don't know, something to be clarified, I suppose. If we use it, fantastic, you're right, that greetings are greetings and nobody owns them, but I don't know if that's something that should be considered or implemented.
It says responsive classroom techniques, but, and I see what you're saying then.
That was it, thanks.
Okay, plus you are up for facilities.
I'm gonna just alter my things that I'm gonna cover.
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring Jack Bingham up first from Barrington Power to discuss.
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I have, my, I will say my eye is a little bit glazed over.
I'll see where I make that.
Yeah. So I will take any information you want to provide to us. And for anyone who is confused, he's here to, to talk to us about the PPA with Barrington Power. That the school board has agreed, has decided to pursue for solar power at the school.
Maybe it would help for Chris and Ellen to talk a little bit, you reviewed it, you were involved in it. Maybe share some of the questions you had that you were able to get clarified, might help us on a starting point.
Yeah.
If you remember.
Yeah, well, I have them here.
I think probably one of the biggest question I had, and Jack answered one of them, but you can answer. Was, if I understand it correctly, based on how much power the system's gonna produce, we pay one-twelve for that power every month, right?
Yeah, let me clarify that a little bit.
Okay.
So, at the beginning of each year, we make a projection. Based on, first year's projection is based on available data from other systems to determine how much power we think we're gonna make for the year. From that projection, we then, as price per kilowatt hour, and that's divided by twelve. And, and there are a whole bunch of reasons for doing that, but the, the biggest reason is, it just makes it easier for. You're paying the same amount every month, I'm accounting for the same amount, amount every month, and at the end of the year, we look at that projection. And compare it with the actual production number, and somebody owes somebody a little money to square it. It's called the true-up process, so, so if I said we were gonna make a hundred thousand kilowatt hours and I made ninety-seven, eight hundred, I owe you for. Twenty-two hundred kilowatt hours, but I shouldn't have done that. Anyway, so, so each year we true up and each year we make a new projection. And as you go along, the projections get better and better because you have real data. Until you get, each year like last year, where every system I own is ten percent underproducing because June was just. Yeah, and so, so weather is, is usually a, a ten percent variable one way or the other, at the most.
So I guess the question I had on top of that was, if you're paying one-twelve every month for the projected rate is. When, in the winter, we might be using more, and we're gonna pay the natural electric co-op. Like, we have to purchase power from the natural electric co-op, we'd be paying them additional amount, right?
Well, so, that happens one year. If the system's sized correctly, and the reason is, you're gonna have to make a sketch again, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, that's all right, I, I, so let me just sketch this out, so I can try and make sense of how this works. So, the school's electric bill looks, on an annual basis, looks something like this.
That's summer.
More or less, that's summer.
Yeah.
Okay, solar production looks like, like this.
Yeah.
Again, that's summer, okay? So what happens is, all of this stuff up here generates credits that go on your bill. So, if the system is sized to do your total load, by the time you get through one entire year, every summer you're generating enough credits to cover you all there. Give or take that ten percent weather variable, so.
No, that answers my question, and, and because you've done, you've had the experience doing it, and you see that that works.
Yeah, so, so the issue really is, is, the reason I said it might happen the first year is it depends when you turn it on. You start to produce the most energy in March. So if you turn the system on in March, there's a pretty good odds that you build a bunch of credits for the next winter. If you turn it on in October, you're knocked out, right? So it will happen the first year, depending on turnout time, but after that, again, if we're talking about doing the whole load year. Your bill should be nothing, and as, as a, for instance, my, my monthly electric bill is thirteen dollars. Because I make enough during the summer to build credits for the winter.
Ethan Redgreen has one.
Yeah. So that makes sense to everybody?
Can I ask a finance question, just, I know that Amber's gonna wanna know about the finance piece. So we're budgeting basically a year and a half in advance, so the true-up process, when does that get reconciled? And is that, does that go toward our monthly, do you just increase the monthly amount the next year if we owe you money? Or how does that work and when does it happen?
And I do it on the calendar here.
So.
Yeah, so, so in January, I would write a check for the last twelve months, or you would write a check for the last twelve months to true up to zero, and we start over again. That's the way I like to do it, just.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of budget, this is new to us, so, you know, we, yeah, we budget in the fall for the following June.
Sure.
So, we're not, we wouldn't have a lot of extra funds, so how close are the projections generally, are they usually pretty close, hopefully?
Well, so, I had two this year that were. Seven hundred kilowatt systems, which are more than twice the size, right? This is three hundred, and, and the true up is actually ten thousand dollars because of June, it's so bad. Generally, the true ups are a couple thousand dollars. Several this year were within a hundred and twenty bucks. There's the weather variable in there, which you really can't control.
And even the first year is that close often, the first year is?
It's possible, it's possible, yeah, I mean, you know, it's funny, this is, this is, you can use all kinds of models to model these things. And I've used all of them, and having owned twenty-six of these for the last ten years, realized that the modeling tools are really not terribly accurate. And I can get more accurate by looking at all the systems that I own, where they're located, how they performed, and average out that way, and I come much closer, actually.
Given our current calendar and where things are at the moment, what would you anticipate as a reasonable turn-on time for us?
I would guess, we're talking June.
Next year, obviously, right, next year, a year next year, not next month, next year, okay. Not next month, okay. And.
But actually, but that would depend on.
Actually, it would be, July would be the first date that we could, because of our, our budget cycle. It would be July one, when work can start.
When work can start, this July one, work can start.
Twenty twenty-five.
Next, next July, work can start.
Yes.
So then I would say, until late September.
So we're gonna be stuck in the September.
Yeah, so you're gonna get.
So like, for that year, we'll just probably keep in the budget whatever electric was for the year before. And then sort of anything that we do get will be a bonus. But that's something someone will have to remember in several years. Patty.
Yeah, okay.
Well, but it can't, sorry, it can't be close to, it has to be this November, which is when that conversation has to happen. Because that's budgeting for next year. Need to have that conversation in October.
All right, well, well, you know, I'll, I'll try and model it out by the month, so we're in the neighborhood, but I, I think your, your approach is right. Make your budget the way it is, anything you get between September and February will be a bonus. And once you get into March, then we start really paying in salary.
Yeah, I would imagine it wouldn't impact our budget much until twenty twenty-six.
Well, the other, the other thing to think about too, though, is if we want to buy this out after five years, we need to think about budgeting. So much every five years as possible, so we have the money to buy it out in five years or something.
For a warrant article, like for, yeah, 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 for sure.
Like so much.
Per year.
Five years, put it, yeah.
So was, do we know what the cost is before that five-year buyout?
We have, we have to do fair market value of what it would be in five years.
Yeah, this is a, this is a tricky tax question, I can't actually tell you what it is.
No, I mean, before the five-year buyout time, we pay yearly for the system that is gonna be installed.
We pay for the energy.
Okay.
So the, for the system.
Right. So we can, we can guesstimate what fair market value might be, it's generally around fifty-five percent. It's hard to tell what that would be, I mean, we end up hiring a third-party priser, both hire and negotiate with different prices. But we can get in the ballpark for your budgeting purposes.
Those are probably the big questions I had, you had answered a lot of the other ones. You know, they were little things, like, you know, I was wondering about, it looked like we had to apply for net metering, and you said you would do it.
Yep.
Right, and. That was coming, the insurance, I guess that's another one, the insurance I was, we'd said about, we would need to have, if I understand it. We would need to have insurance in case our, anybody in our school hurt the system.
Or the roof collapses or something.
Yeah. Please don't say that.
Something along that side. And I, obviously, I insure for the value of the equipment and for lost equipment. And damage to the building.
So do we need a separate insurance binder for that, or is that typically included in the insurance that we already have?
Involved in those discussions with other schools, whatever, I can certainly put in touch with them.
Do you think Amber wants that?
Amber, yeah, Amber will reach out to our insurance company and let them know what's going on, and then they can advise. And if, if that's okay, I'll give her your contact info if she needs to speak to you.
Okay.
Is our engineering information on the status of our roof and the structural integrity to hold this system up to date? I mean, we just had to look that, right, we just have the roof repair, replaced, so we should, for the insurance purposes, be up to date on our engineering specs. And all of that.
Yeah.
We need to get another engineering look at our roof to do that.
No, we shouldn't, the insurance will have all of that, so they'll, I'm sure they'll let us know if they need something else.
Well, so we would normally, if we can't find the information, we're gonna hire an engineer to do it. So, before we find, we have your LP.
Had a number of engineers come out over the last. We should have plenty of documentation for you.
But it's, we're not actually talking about that much weight, we're got four or five pounds per square feet.
Compared to what was on there, the ballast to do.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Taking all those, that stuff, I can't remember how many tons. Putting back more insulation, dent glass, and then the nine-millimeter membrane.
It's a fraction of the weight.
What?
Was a fraction of the weight of what it was before.
A fraction of the weight, yeah.
Okay, great.
Even with the installation.
Okay, great.
Um, and I'm sure that you looked at this when you looked at the site, but is there any sort of. Site issues that you foresee that we would have to deal with, or like, are, you know, is there tree coverage that like, okay, I'm just trying to.
It's actually not bad, I mean, sooner or later, the trees themselves might become issue, but.
Okay.
It's not now.
Okay, I'm just trying to see if there's any other costs that might pop up randomly.
So, so just, just keep in mind, the interesting thing about this is, your cost doesn't change.
Right.
Being a per kilowatt hour price, that's it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of any contingencies, like insurance binders, having to remove a bunch of trees or something that like may. That we didn't think about before we agreed to it, that came up.
So once the, the switch is turned on, we still will be receiving two bills, one from, you can actually let's go co-op for their small portion. And then one from Barrington Power, like they're generating.
Okay. What do you need from, what do you need from me?
We need to approve someone signing this. Who wants to sign? Well, we, we will sign it, but we need your approval before anyone signs it. My approval or the board?
Second. All, any discussion? Yeah.
One last question, you got me thinking about the tree question. I, I, I think I read through this carefully enough, but is there anything in here that's, that would, if you, if a tree needed to come down, and if we are just paying you for the power. That doesn't give you power to take down trees without our approval, that would still be, it's our property, so we're still managing the property. But if it impinges on the solar power, then does that affect the cost between us?
Well, it would change the number of kilowatt hours we pay, right? Which would be to neither one of our benefits. But the only thing that's in the contract for us, as far as the building goes, is we have access to the bill, to get to the roof, to get.
Okay.
Electric or whatever, yeah, we have no, we have no rights to go out and trees.
Okay, all right, great.
Ellen, did you have an estimate of how much it would save per year using this system instead of what we have now?
Yeah, we did, twelve thousand, I think, I think. Off the top of my head, I don't have it.
Barrington Power is predicting twenty-three thousand.
Okay.
Per year.
For the first year. So maybe that might not be.
First full year, yeah.
First, first year calendar, right?
Yep. Cool.
Barrington, oh, just Barrington Power is gonna take care of pretty much all the paperwork with, um, with everybody, so New Hampshire Let's Go Co-op and all their teams, they're also gonna be sitting down with the Fire Department to make sure everybody is set on that end, so it's not.
No issues.
Doesn't need to be discussed, so it doesn't scare anybody.
Yeah, I, there, I just saw something about like electric vehicles, and that they're like, hard to extinguish. Is it, is there a similar issue for like solar panels?
Well, so, um, they, we are legally required to put what's called a rapid shutdown device on every panel.
Oh, okay.
So, just a quick aside, panels are connected in series, there are a whole bunch of panels connected together. Well, when you add them all up, that can actually be fairly high voltage. Be fairly dangerous. There were stories about firemen stepping through panels, getting rather surprising shots. So now we're required to put this little rapid shutdown on every panel. So when the power goes out, everything disconnects. It's just, the whole thing goes down. So, if the, the fire department will have the location of the disconnect, that takes the whole system down. So it's pretty safe. There are a lot of requirements for making it safe.
To, Chris, does, do we, I don't know this. Is there a generator backup for the school in general if the power goes out?
There is.
There is, okay, and that would kick in if we lost power for this?
Yes. So, so this won't run when the power's out.
Right.
Legally, because they don't want it running, and you loaned some linemen out of insurance two months down the road, the power's out, so. And we also don't want it running by the generator front.
No.
So, um, this is actually connected outside the generator. So when the power goes out, this is down, the generator is inside the school, not physically, but electrically.
Right.
So they're both isolated.
Okay, so we have a pending motion, got a little off course, but that's fine. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Thank you so much for all of your help and patience and- Well, we had Chris and Ellen on it.
You're right.
The last meeting, I was sick and I just forgot. And then I remembered it was like, meetings at four, and I remembered at like four twenty-five, and I quick texted Chris, and he's like, yeah, it's over and done with.
Everybody have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
No, it was the same night I went to Co Brown.
Oh, yeah. Okay, do you wanna go back up to landscaping?
We will go back up to landscaping.
Excellent.
I didn't get an RFP for landscaping for this year, twenty, July one, twenty twenty-fourth, June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. But I did reach out to our current landscaper, who does a very good job. He's always very responsive to anything that I need around the school. I asked him if he would be willing to give us a five percent discount to roll his contract over for one year. He agreed. So with the five percent discount, it means a fourteen hundred dollar savings, which now brings the contract to twenty-six thousand, six sixty-five fifty for the year. Is Ricky that amount again? Uh, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents.
That was great. Thank you for doing that, and that was generous of him.
Very.
To do that for us.
Yes, excellent.
Is it not at a, a mauer needs to go to RFP?
Um, we can extend the contract. You can waive, you can waive, yeah, you can waive it and extend the contract.
Thank you.
I recall we didn't get very many bids last year either.
Two.
Yeah, okay.
We're kind of out of the way for a lot of people.
Right.
Don't do a lot of commercial work.
Who aren't located directly in Deerfield. Got it.
So I just need approval from the school boards and youth boards with, um,
Extension of the contract.
I'll get it out to Amber for her signature.
I'll make a motion to extend the landscaping contract.
For one year?
For one year, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, unit ventilators.
Josh Kingsley's supply fan, we had four contractors to give bids. Two of the bids were relatively close, within a couple thousand dollars. The other ones were ten thousand plus, seven thousand plus, as they go up. Um, top two contenders was Denron Plumbing and Heating, and Granite State Plumbing and Heating. Both proposed a very good replacement unit, also included balancing costs. Uh, Denron came in at twenty-five thousand, three eighty-nine, Granite State Plumbing in at twenty-seven thousand. We are proposing accepting the Granite State Plumbing and Heating bid, because they are our current contractor on site. All companies came to a big house job.
That's who came when we had the issue that night, right? They were here helping us that night, yeah.
Because I'm dumb and don't know anything about buildings, can you explain what this even is?
Exhaust units that are on top of our roof. They're basically located in the hallways, but the vents go into the balcony and the hallways. This is what's bringing air that's already in the building, that's not coming through our unit ventilators, how we can exhaust it through those. So those are seven that are looking to be replaced.
And they're, those are original to the building?
Those are original. They have had some motors replaced, but over time, they've literally shaken themselves loose to the point where they're not running anymore. So instead, I knew this was going up um, as a capital project for this year. I figured it was safe to have two of them shut down, and, um, without having to spend any cost on repairs that are unnecessary. So those are those. Then the supply thing, this is a, is an original piece of equipment. This supplies, this takes air from the, brings it down to the hood system in the kitchen. Again, original. Seen better days. It's been mandated previously before I got here. And with solar panel going up on the roof, I would rather just take care of this, get any of that work off the roof, so when the solar panels come in, that should be the last operation on the roof. Brand new, brand new units. Um, the old units were belt-driven, which kind of took a little finesse to, um, get them to draw the right CFM cubic feet per minute, the amount of air that is exhausted. The new units will be, have a dial, so they can be dialed in more correctly and precisely, once the system is balanced. So it's just a step up in efficiency.
Does that, are the, do these run on electric?
These are.
Okay, so the new ones will be more efficient?
Yes, they will, because they're direct drive.
Were, was this work anticipated when we planned out the roof repair? Or is this repair going to be putting holes in our new roof that we don't wanna be doing?
These are all existing units. No other units are being added or subtracted. They are just, they're length-to-length repair recovery units. So it's just-
Okay, so it's not gonna impact the integrity of our new roof?
No, it's not, trust me. No, it was not. Yeah, I mean, sure of that. In addition, to add new units to the roof, you would need an engineer to come in, do a complete study of CFMs before you go placing, making new walls and builds, so no. Yes.
Good news, thank you.
Chris, um, would this be an after July first, just thinking about the fiscal year?
One.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four, proceeding.
I'm just thinking about the trust fund public hearings we have to have, so we wouldn't have to have that public hearing in June, because it wouldn't start until July. Okay. Thank you.
I think, um, Granite State is saying one week, forty hours per completion, so as soon as I can get July one, I will be at July one, but shortly after July fourth, get them in, get it off, and get it done.
Right, and just for everyone, this will be able to be covered by a trust fund, so it's not a budget item.
Chris, did you say there was seven exhaust fans and one supply fan?
Seven, yes.
And one supply?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, I will make a motion to award the bid to Granite State Plumbing and Heating.
Second.
Nate, any discussion?
Did you wanna, um, didn't you want a contingency for extras, just in case?
Oh, yes, um, thank you. Um, I'd like to, an allowance of two thousand for, for seeing why. This is original wire that we dealing with also.
Okay.
So, um, depending on what condition that wire is in, I'd like to request a addition of two thousand dollars for that project.
Okay, that seems like a more complicated number than I wanna say out loud. I'm just kidding, stop that, but I'm, I'll make a motion to approve.
Or do you wanna just amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve up to twenty-six thousand.
Second amendment. Up to what? No, this is Granite, not Denron.
It's at twenty-seven.
Twenty-nine.
It's at twenty-seven, one fifty.
Wait, what am I looking at? Oh, I didn't look at total cost. Sorry, I was looking at project cost. Fine. Um, all right, twenty-nine, one fifty. You think that will be sufficient? Okay.
Second.
Um, okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Oh no, I lost my agenda.
The agenda just says Chris.
Yeah.
That's great.
Chris is excited, though. Look at how much they're getting checked on.
Finally. Some contractors looked at it, and I got four quotes back. Um, quotes range from twenty-three thousand to sixty-five thousand. Two of the quotes came in from chimney speaking companies. Um, they are the lower bidders. I don't wanna accept their bids, because they were missing a lot of information that should have been submitted, um, in their paperwork.
And can you remind us, so, did we already approve ordering the, the actual stack?
Nope.
No, okay. That's what this is.
We had talked about that, and then finding an installer, and then Chris went back.
Yes.
Yeah, so-
Just to, it was very hard to find a supplier and an installer. It's much easier finding one company to get it and install it.
So this is the total price for the whole?
This is for the horizontal and the vertical stack to be replaced.
Installation and acquiring, okay.
Installation, put back information.
Oh, right, this is in an area separate from the new roof?
This is going up through the roof.
Through our new roof.
Through our new roof, but it's going in the existing location. Everybody knows that they need to any work on the roof.
Make it fit.
To make sure that the warranty still remains intact.
Right. Look, is, is the flue separate? The flue, or is this also the flue? The flue is sort of the line, I guess I'm thinking of a flue liner and the stack. Stack is the outside, the flue liners on the inside?
You have the horizontal that the boilers come off into a horizontal pipe, and then that horizontal runs into the vertical stack. One of our issues with the vertical stack is where the horizontal runs in, there is deterioration between the connection there. So it's better just to replace the whole thing. You get, um, the paperwork on it, dates of install, who installed it, you get all that information that I don't-
We don't currently have, yeah.
We're gonna do it, but spend the money and do it right.
Yeah. As we, as we saw, it was a big safety issue.
All of what you're describing is in this price we're looking at. There's not a separate cost for something else. Everything you just, okay, great. Okay.
Dismanaging to resection and putting it back into service. So, um, Denron, Denron Hall also, um, submitted a number on this project. Um, a fifty thousand, one hundred and fifteen, yeah, fifty thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, Denron, Denron Hall is probably a major HVAC contractor in the state of New Hampshire. This is nothing out of their realm to complete. KPMB, who is the, the highest contractor, they can probably do the job, but probably not as well as Denron Hall at fifty thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. I'd like to propose that you go accept the bid on Denron Hall, and you go with that starting July one, twenty twenty-four.
And again, this would be covered by a trust fund.
Um, I might have missed it. Can you say, what was wrong with Caesar, the second one?
Um, I just don't know much about them. They're a, they're from Littleton, New Hampshire, and I think part of their, their cost was commuting down here, and I don't know much about as far as their work. Um, I know from being on projects, I've seen Denron Hall, um, their website is impressive with the work they've done throughout movement. So I just think they have the right person. They also have boiler experience. So, you know, once we start this up, they can also make sure everything is working correctly as it should.
Are there, is there main doors or main office located?
Main gesture, so they're close by, yeah.
Do you need any contingencies here, or?
I'm gonna, I'm doing the demo, so they can have access to the pipe that's in, running through the middle of the art room in their closets. Um, a five thousand dollar contingency or an allowance, I think we'd cover that, the replacement of that drywall.
Got to do the drywall and stuff.
Everything in the boiler room is up to date, so I'm not really anticipating anything, but I think it's probably better to have that allowance.
Do we have to include that in accepting this?
No, I would accept this project, and then I would just give, of course, permission to do the work in the art room and then fix it.
Yeah.
Whatever he demos, put it back together.
Okay. Um, okay, so I will make a motion to approve the bid from Denron Hall for the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and one, and fourteen dollars.
Second.
Kendra and Nate, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Yeah, that's all set.
Just make sure you, um, track what you're doing for repairs to the trust. So when Trish does the POs for whatever you do, it's noted.
Yep.
So we can keep track of it, thank you.
Um, related to the chimney, I think I saw an email from Chief Fisher asking about it.
Yep.
Um, do you wanna respond to someone on responding?
I will, because what I'll do is, once I get the, um, the cut sheets, cut sheets are the informational sheets, they give you the diameter and all that information on specific product. I'll forward those cut sheets to Chief Fisher for his approval again. I did that with the last middle that I got.
Yep.
Um, it's gonna be very much the same type of material being used, but just to cover the bases, um, I'll forward that on to Chief Fisher, and he can forward it on to Fire Marshal for the final review.
Okay, thank you, thanks. Punch list.
Fire alarm punch list, okay. Um, there were five major, um, items on the punch list. The only two upstairs, others are unknown, amazing protection. Last August, when they decided that's the way they would move forward, and taking care of, um, notifying the fire department when they come on site, that the active issues in the gym, uh, RB Lewis is- Uh, RB Lewis is the installer. It's just to send you some information that I have already forwarded to you here for the fire department. NFP, National Fire Protection and Manufacturing, says you cannot put a smoke detector. You, the smoke detector needs to be at the highest point of the ceiling. So where they proposed it last August is six feet lower than what the standard falls for. I sent that information on to Chief Fish for his input on what we should do. What should be an alternative to that detection. I have not heard that from Chief Fish yet. Chief Fish? Chief Fisher yet, so I'm waiting for him. I'm. I'm still emailing him for a response. I have not received one. Uh, number five, during the February meeting, we had, um. A representative from the community engineer and RB Lewis to give better notification to the fire department. Um, it was suggested that we. Give specific names to the smoke detectors out in the halls. So I went through with prints and. Looked at what was the closest indicator to each smoke detector. Um, I reached out to Chief Fisher to set up a meeting to come and actually view the print, the names that I had given him. And see if he had any suggestions or recommendations on how he would like to see the names. Um, I had not heard that from Chief Fisher. On that as well, so I will keep asking him for his input.
Okay, and so, yeah, for anyone who doesn't remember, it's, it would be like. There's a fire out by room two oh three or something instead of just.
On the first floor.
Yeah, second floor.
I understand that it was to take the place of the heat detectors that we currently have. In every room. We're going away from the heat detectors because it is no longer code. To have that in this building because we are one hundred percent spread. So staying, you know, it's, it's accepted by code to have that, that, those items removed.
Yeah.
So without, um. Without having the names to the individual smoke detectors, that's. Could hold us up to the demolition of all the old units that need to be removed because of the upgrade. So. Yeah.
Um, and this will, this work will cost money, of course, like when they rename everything?
To rename the units, everything is gonna cost money, everything does.
Yes.
You can't have a price for the gymnasium detection until we figure out which way, um, the fire department wants to be told that.
Right.
The naming of the, giving specific names to the smoke detectors in the hallways. I received a quote from RB Lewis for one thousand, three hundred dollars.
For the time that it will take.
For what?
For the time that it will take to do that work.
To rename it. It's basically going in on your laptop and going, pulling up a device and just giving it a name that'll show up on the panel.
Okay.
So.
Do we have a date set for demo, or are we still waiting for Chief Fisher in order to set the demo?
July, as soon as the kids, actually, we're gonna be out of the school because this is already built into the trust fund for the original fire alarm project. Um, but we can't move forward with that until we get item five. I, item one, actually, item five, um, taken care of and one. Yes, so.
Okay. Have we made Chief Fisher aware of like our hopeful start date? Like, we need an answer?
I did today.
Okay, good. Because I, I.
We've had many discussions before saying, you know. And I think I have an email from him saying, this summer project will be, meaning this summer coming up will be. One through five. I've been able to get two, three, and four done without any problem, without having to wait for summer. But one and five are potentially holding us up.
Okay.
Um, one is gonna hold us up more because that needs to go back out to an engineer for design. You can't, I don't wanna just, no one was just gonna come into the building and just throw smoke detectors up without an engineering.
For sure.
Stay out.
Right.
And then go into the fire marshal for his approval, so. Could be a lengthy process. Hopefully not, but I will, I, I will actually make a call to Chief Fisher tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that we've already conveyed that we would like to get this done this summer. Um, but I think we just need to stress to him that like this is happening this summer. Um, we would love your partnership on this, but we are demoing this summer. And if you, you know, if we can't get answers, we're gonna stick to the code as it's written. Alright, do you need anything from us regarding the fire system?
No, no, I mean, the fire, fire system works fantastically, um. We did have the CO, um, couple things on this plan, plus two, three, and four, the module classrooms. Were able to take the smoke detectors, much like we did in the art room, take the smoke detectors out and add CO smoke detectors to those units. Um. There was four or five locations that they wanted to have the volume increased. That was done over a period of vacation. And. And all, all, we had an issue with some detectors not working and that's been rectified.
Strobes, yeah, okay. Cool.
Everything else is going well.
Great, thank you so much for, for all of this work. You've clearly been quite busy, so thank you so much. Okay. Now, Mrs. Big, Bickford is on the hot seat. I was gonna say, sort of, for the next one, but. Not for you, that's Patty's problem.
She's gonna leave before we talk about finance.
Alright, yes, I have my topic. Alright, so, uh, it was included in the board packet online, but the packet, uh, that's coming around to you now has a little bit more detail to it. So the first two pages are the rubric which you, um, hopefully, hopefully have already seen. And then the additional sixteen pages behind that is an explanation of how we get to this number. On the rubric in the front, so it explains each area and how that measure is calculated. So what this is, is basically the state of New Hampshire's report card. For Deerfield Special Education. Um, the second page of the rubric kinda gives you the grades that we can get. We could get, um, needs substantial intervention, needs intervention, needs assistance, or meets requirements. The goal obviously is to meet requirements. Um, Deerfield has done a fantastic job this past year and last year. Um, and meets requirements according to the state for our requirements for special education. The rubric is broken out into four different kind of bigger categories. Um, the first one is around results, what they call results based. This really has to do with those auxiliary pieces of. Graduation dropout, how much time our students are spending in special education environments versus the gen ed environment. Um, preschool measures and anything like related to those kinda things. Um, wherever you see a two is like a failing score, that's basically an F is a two. Um, and then a zero is like an A plus. That's where we want to be. The lower the score, the better we actually do. Um, so we, our aim is to have zeros across the whole board. Wherever you see an NA, it means the data sample for that, uh, collection is too small to report out on. Uh, because either we don't have students that make up that population. Or the number is so low that it would be very identifiable, um, as to who that student may or may not be. Um, so NA is just not, not publishable for the department of ed. Um, the component that I would say is the area that Deerfield and all of the other schools in the SAU. And I would even argue across the state need to work on is that assessment area, the second grid in the rubric. Um, and this is for two factors. One, we are graded on our participation rate for our students with disabilities on the state assessment. Even though New Hampshire law says parents can choose to withdraw their students from testing, federal law says you can't. And so we get graded on federal law, not just state law. And so for federal numbers, because we receive federal funds for special education, we get held to that federal standard. And so we, uh, all it takes is one student to opt out of testing or have their parent opt them out of testing. And we fail that mark on this assessment.
And does that impact our funding?
Um, not necessarily. In order for our funding to be impacted on these scores. We would have to fail abysmally and not do anything about it.
Okay.
Um, so Deerfield is in the best shape out of all the schools in the SAU, so congratulations to Kristen and Lisa and the team here. Um, they, they have done a fantastic job and they meet requirements. Um, the other part of testing that we're kinda held to is the measurement of proficiency of our students with disabilities. So even though our students have disabilities and may not physically be able to perform on grade level. Um, we are still held to a standard of proficiency within special education. So we get graded on whether our students score as a proficient measure according to the state numbers. Um, even though they may not physically be able to perform at grade level.
Um, sorry, I feel like I'm, I'm now driving you off course a little. For high school. How does that work for our district?
Yep, so these numbers include high school.
Okay.
So we're, we're not exempt from reporting out, um, or being graded on our students in high school, even though they're just not in this building. This includes pre-K up through twenty-two. So if we have students who aren't even in school right now or attending a transition program, out of district is included in here. Anybody who we are financially responsible for is included in these numbers.
Even though we might not have can, sort of, control over, okay.
Which is not homeschooling. If, if parents remove their students from the di, from the district, then they're not on, in here.
Yes.
So, an out of district student is required to take state tests?
Yes, ma'am. So what happens is sometimes.
And have to.
And be proficient. And be proficient. So, but, what, so what typically happens? It's, it's, it's not necessarily an all or none, right? So there's what is called the alternative assessment from the state. So if our students are significantly below grade level. And there is just not even possible to get them to take that assessment because of their disability. We have alternative means of assessing them, but we have to do that alternative assessment. And their participation in that alternative assessment is what we're graded on.
But they can opt out of that as well.
Their parents can opt them out. And when they do that, it counts against us in our.
And it's, that's a bone of contention with everyone in the state because it's widely, wildly advertised. You can opt your child out. Your child does not have to take that assessment and. Right, the federal government says you have to and we do. There are different areas throughout reporting in the state that ding us. When our participation rate isn't high enough, so it's frustrating.
Can I ask about a specific indicator?
Sure, yeah, ask away.
Okay, sorry, again, if I'm derailing your.
No, not at all.
Thought. Um, can you talk about C three, which is on page four? Like, what is that? And we scored a two, which my understanding is, did not meet state or target.
So C three, um, C one, two, and three all, uh, pertain to special education environments. So it's the amount of time that our students are spending in a special education environment, like a pullout. Service instead of in the classroom provided, being provided push-in services. So every time we pull a student out of the classroom to get specialized instruction or something of that nature. Um, that counts against us for the time they're out. Uh, the more time that they spend in, the better our score is because we're supposed to keep them in those classrooms. Um, around eighty percent of the day.
So what, is it fair to say that this is probably not data that comes from Deerfield Community School because our students are fully included? It's probably the students we have in high school that are in special programs and/or are out of district students?
Um, it could be, but it also would include if a student is pulled out for, um. Some kind of instruction during the day. So if for some reason, yeah.
Okay.
Um, depending on the service. So sometimes speech might count if it's a specialized instruction. If it's just a related service, it doesn't count. But if it's a, um, student who receives speech because they are getting instruction on how to communicate. Um, that could count as a specialized setting if they're pulled out of the classroom for that. Um, behavioral, um, education and support, social emotional instruction may happen outside the classroom. Um, Deerfield does a really good job on their numbers. It will say your, your environments overall are pretty good. But it also may include, um, some students who aren't even in.
Right, so that was my.
Yes, they might be over at, uh, one of the high schools, could be Concord, could be Cole Brown. Um, could be those students who may spend more than their, um, eighty percent of their day out of gen ed instead.
Okay, so yeah, this says separate schools, residential facilities, or homebound or hospital placements. So is this to suggest that we have like higher than, like, state average for, let's say. Who are in separate schools, residential facilities, or homebound or hospital placement?
No, this doesn't report on your percentage of students in those placements. This only reports on the time that they spend in special ed setting.
I see.
Not how many kids you have in those types of placements.
But if we have kids that are there full time, like, let's say we have a kid full time at a residential facility, like, that would count. Against us because. They're there full time, okay. So some of these, we may have scored worse, quote unquote, for providing more.
Correct.
It does, yeah, and it's so silly. It doesn't, it doesn't take into account this, the individual students. Like, we have to give them what they need and if what they need is to come out and receive a service. And, but then they tell us, you know, that's held against us for doing that. It is, it is frus, these are frustrating.
It's because they go by that measure of least restrictive environment and the least restrictive environment is always assumed to be in the classroom. Uh, unless there's those individuals.
They tell us we have to serve them wherever they need to be served, but then they get marked against us.
There's, there's many measures like that. They, you know, they also say that. It's, the reason why a student has special education is because they're not able to perform typical to their peers. So they need supports, but yet they expect them to be proficient.
Right.
And you get held against that standard. So it's, there's a lot of contradictory things in here.
That's helpful though, because I looked at this and I was like, I don't know what any of this means, so this is very helpful.
Some of it, you just.
Speak the language on daily.
I don't, yeah. I don't.
But the reason why I'm sharing it is because I want you guys to understand this kind of information. Because it connects to the budgeting, it connects to your systems in the school. And, and then understanding how it all plays together and works. Um, and when we talk about all the requirements and things, like, these are the things that we're being graded on, on a regular basis that we have to meet as special educators.
Yeah, and the different like push and pull that you guys are dealing with, like, we can't give every student out of district placement. We have to have some here. We, this is the least restrictive environment for a lot of people, so.
How often is this report run?
Um, it's reported every year and majority of the data actually is reflected on the previous year. There is some data that is this fiscal calendar year. Um, but a lot of the data is pulled from the previous year's cycle combined with some of the factors from this year to compile this report. The DOE does publish this information on their website, but it, they usually lag a year behind.
Um, I appreciate you bringing it, thank you. I've been here for a little while and I've never seen one of these reports.
I've come to learn that, which is why I wanted to make sure every district got this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and this is, it is relatively new within the last four years. Um, we didn't used to get a report card. We still got graded on these indicators, well. Many of these indicators, not all of them. Um, they keep adding new ones every year. Um, but we never got it in this report card format.
Explain why the F indicator and the G indicators both have not applicable. Why, why they're being not applicable?
So the sample size was too small to report from the state, or the state didn't collect that data this year. Um, so if.
It's probably that they didn't collect the data.
Yeah, it says no score this year.
So, well, not necessarily. So the parent involved, all involvement one is actually a survey. So, um, recently, this survey actually just came out this year. I had asked the, um, principal to share out a parent survey from special ed. So that's probably posted on websites, it may have gone out in email. Uh, one call now, some of the principals shows do it Facebook. Um, it's a survey and we get graded on the amount of parents we have take that survey. So we are out of compliance if we don't have a certain percentage of our parents complete that survey. So why would we have not applicable? It probably means the state didn't collect the data on that last year, but they are collecting it this year, so it'll show up on next year's report card.
I think it's, Kendra just pointed something out that I had actually thought about a moment ago, and we're very lucky it's not being counted this year. But they're going, and if you noticed on the last page, they're going to start, um, holding us accountable if our special education administrator turns over. And Karen Gershur retired after twenty something years. And if they had started this year, we would have been marked down on that because Jess is new.
What they call it is a risk rubric. And so there, that's how they add in other things that count us as being risk, at risk for potential violations of IDA. It doesn't mean we've actually violated it. It means we're at risk for potentially violating it. And they consider turnover to be a risk because the new director you come, has, have come in, may not have the content knowledge that somebody else had there historically. So they count that as a risk.
It's just another area of frustration that we just had someone that was literally here for twenty something years.
And that's what plays in when we, when we go to I E P T meetings and we say, we propose certain things. There are parameters which why we propose those things. We are held to certain standards by the state and federal government that we have to meet along with trying to be reasonable and present services for students and families that they need. So i- it's a balancing act and we can't always make everyone happy um, because we are also measured by certain standards from the state and federal government.
What would happen? I'm glad we're, we're meeting requirements, but if something happened and next year we didn't, whatever, what is, what happens as if, if we were to start to creep up the scale and?
Yeah. It, it happens, it fluxes every year depending on the student body you have, the staff turnover you have. If you lose a group of special educators and now all of a sudden you got, have newbies come in and you have to train them, you, you go up and down on the rubric. So essentially, as long as we're in between that needs assistance and meets requirements, we're in good shape. If we dip down to needs intervention, then the state steps in and we have to meet certain benchmarks of requirements. Like we have to go through, um, I forget what they call it, but essentially like a audit of ourselves of why we performed so poorly, create goals and measurements, and then report back to the state how we've met those goals and measurements. We have to do professional development, those kinds of things. Um, if we get down to need substantial intervention, we're in real bad shape. And that's where if we end up staying in that need substantial intervention for two years in a row, that's when it impacts our funding. Because they can overtake a portion of our IDE A funds and say we have to use it for X, Y, and Z.
This is very interesting. Um, I will say I would love to know more about special ed, especially like reimbursement. I just like, how much money we're actually getting reimbursed, I think, would be a very interesting thing for the board to know because people ask us and I have no idea.
You can, um, when Amber comes on June nineteenth, she can, when she goes through the revenue sheet, you can ask her to point out the areas that are special ed related and explain.
Yeah, cuz I just.
There's a formula for that that we go by. So we, we have to reach benchmarks of funding before the state will kick in any reimbursement. So we have to spend three and a half times what is considered adequacy for students. And that, that measurement is actually like, I think it's around eighteen thousand, seventeen five, eighteen.
Times the state average.
Or the state average, that's what it is, state average. So it's, we have to spend three and a half times that number, which I think right now is seventeen five, eighteen, right around there. So we have to spend, um, three times, three and a half times that before the state will partially fund special education costs. There's no guarantee to how much they will fund. Um, some years they actually can fund a hundred percent beyond three and a half just because it's a pool and it's prorated. So depending on how many schools ask for that money, depends on how much you get. So if you have less schools ask for that money one year, you might get more reimbursed. But if you have a ton of schools get to that three and a half mark, you may only get fifty percent beyond the three and a half mark.
Is it ranked in like a similar way to like the building?
No.
Money, okay, so it's not like needs based.
Just for an example, to see how poor the funding is. So if you got, say you got to three and a half times. So they're saying, well, first you have to spend sixty-five thousand dollars on one student. Say we spend seventy-five. You can get a portion of that ten thousand recouped. One year it was only sixty-five percent. So out of seventy-five thousand, we got sixty-five hundred dollars. So that's how bad the funding is, that's for one.
Because they're not reimbursing you any of that money below that three and a half percent. You are going to pay that amount no matter what. The reimbursement is only for the portion above that amount. So you're, you get a percentage of that above amount. And then when we hit ten times the amount of, um, payment, so we reach.
Almost two hundred thousand.
Thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, yeah, that's, I think that's what it was said to be. Two hundred thousand dollars, then the state covers a hundred percent beyond.
Beyond two hundred thousand. You have to spend the two hundred thousand to get ten percent beyond it, right?
Not on all of.
Correct. So if you, if, if one student costs two hundred and five thousand dollars, they would give you five thousand.
Yes, correct.
So I have a question of like what, this is, sorry, this is way beyond this rubric.
It's okay.
But it just came to my mind. We, and I'll ask Amber about this more in depth. But, um, like what can we charge for special ed? Like if we have people at DCS doing speech therapy or whatever, like, does, does their salary and whatever the amount we have paid for them, does that get included in? Okay.
So we can't, because we're a public entity, we can only charge at cost.
Yes.
So we can't charge anything inflated beyond that.
But those things are included, like.
Pretty rare that you would get to that amount of money for a student in district. It's usually an out of district student because every unit of speech they get, if it's like a forty dollar a week cost.
But we do, but that is included.
That's how we do that. So, um, Julie Wright, admin assistant at the SAU for special ed, she does those rates, it's rate setting, and we rate set for all the services for kids.
Even if they're in-house?
Yeah, we keep track of all that.
Okay.
Yep. Because there is, there are those one-off chances where a kid has a two to one, they need two paras or they receive nursing, transportation. There are some times where we do get to that cap, that three and a half percent cap, and we can bill for some of those things beyond that. So we track every kid just in case.
No, that's very helpful.
And that's only one, that's one form of funding, so we do get our IDA grant too. So that's just a pot of money. And when that was supposed to be fully funded, you know, forty years ago, you could count on for, when I started, you could count on maybe like eighteen hundred dollars per special ed student. So we actually turned in how many students we had and you got money for each of those students. But then it was, the money was gone very quickly. So probably twenty-five years ago, it was, no, you're gonna get this amount of money. And it does, you know, the amount per student may have gone down, but the money capped out and they never got to the forty percent funding that they promised, so.
I don't know how you ever really get the information out there to people, but to me, listening to this and you and I've had conversations too, I don't know how you get the public to understand that because when people say we need to cut funding, we need to cut spending or not spend as much and that will help reduce our taxes. Man, we can't cut spending in that area and there's all these reasons why. And when they say, well, we get money from the state, well, I didn't know that. Well, we have to spend this much first and then we get a little bit for that. And then when we get here, I mean, there's just, it's those kind of budget things that the public needs to understand that, yeah.
So I know that, that is a bone of contention in each of the districts, right? It, it has such a huge impact on budget. I know yesterday, EPSOM invited all of their reps and the state senator to the board meeting to talk about things like this. And so that might be a suggestion at some point if you were up to that. Um, because I think the only way to talk, do it is to keep talking about it until people understand or until they make change in policy to address these issues. Um, because it's policy that puts us in these issues.
Yeah.
Um, when they make.
And the state budget.
Fully fund them, but even if they fully fund them, that money's still gonna come through their pocket. It comes from somewhere, no matter where, what mandate it comes from, so. Just a suggestion, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't solve all the problems, but I, I think communication is the only way to continue to kind of get that information out there.
It could be a start.
Right, it's a start.
Yep. And there were a lot of bills in the state house this year, especially, yeah, about special ed funding and stuff. Um, yeah, I struggle with how to, how to, how we can present that because I do think it's helpful. I'm try, I'm thinking of, you know, spreadsheets for budget season, like, period.
I mean, it could be very challenging because there are so many pieces to it, but.
It's finding people to listen.
Yes.
You know, like Jess said, you just have to keep talking about it and, until all of a sudden word is spreading, like, did you know that we have to pay for all of this and?
Right, cuz we hear things like, you know, in our budget, we have X amount for special ed transportation. And then people will say, well, that's fully funded by the state. And you're like, it absolutely is not fully funded by the state.
But I think even, even your reps have a, might have a misunderstanding of how that funding works.
Yeah.
Because I think somehow, sometimes that's how that message gets delivered out.
Right.
Is they think it happens one way, but it's because they don't necessarily understand all the back pieces that go with that and the rules and laws we have to follow, um, that make us spend this much money.
Well, I would love to work with you on this so we can figure out how to present it.
I literally could talk about this all day long, so.
And you do.
Well, I'm like, um, I've been trying to like present things, not, I don't know if there are people paying attention, but I try to present them in like a way that is easy to jump, to digest. And so I would love to do like, uh.
Tea time with Jess?
Yeah, or like, sort of, like visual of like, this is like an example student, like not one of our actual students. We could make up something realistic and say, this is how much is funded. So like, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking about it. I'll, we'll connect though, because I think it is very important. And I don't want to stigmatize special ed or anything. Like I obviously like fully agree that we need to be providing services and paying for them, but there is a really big misunderstanding of how this all works and how this factors into our budget. And the calls for just spend less money is like not practical or realistic for a lot of the situations. So.
Yeah, anytime.
I'll email you. I'll email Patty.
Yes, please. Thanks, Jess.
Well, thank you so much. This was very, very interesting. I didn't know it existed, so.
Are you ready for more money talk?
No.
I, I know.
Sure.
I didn't put this in the drive because I didn't want to frighten you. Oh, no.
Well, it's just, it's hard to digest if it's, if you read the budget. There you go.
So before we start to go through this document, I, I will tell you upfront, um, that the news is better at this point for you. Right now, your deficit is seventy-one thousand, two fifty-six.
My goodness.
Whoa, way better, um, which is great. Um, and I mean, oh, you know, I want to make sure that, that we thank, that we thank Trish and the building here and the administrators and Chris because they've gone an entire year on a frozen budget. Um, you know, like I said, we've joked about it, but Trish emails me, there's a paper sale. Can I buy, you know, ten cases, please? Um, that's the level of spending we've been at this year. It's been very, very difficult. So it's, yes, it's exciting to get to this number, but it did not come with a lot of pain and, um, and I can tell you, if you tell a teacher they can't have money for supplies, you better believe they bought those supplies out of their own pockets.
I was gonna say, so that's what concerns me is like the amount of teachers who probably had to spend their own money on stuff. And so, yes, I'm happy that we're at a deficit of seventy-one. I don't know how to rectify that situation, but like, is there something that the board could authorize that would, I don't know if we could reimburse people for like the amount that they have spent, like.
It would be too much of a free-for-all.
Yes, no.
Because you can't just say, you know, some people would say, well, I would have spent money if I knew.
Right.
And having been there.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be tough. Um, and typically it wouldn't be, we were frozen an entire year. I mean, this was, you know, which is why your budget was up so much next year because this stuff all happened in real time.
Right.
Um, what, we wouldn't typically do a hard freeze. We would watch your budget, but this year we were in deficit so much, we could barely cover the deficit. So we had to get, we couldn't take any chances. Um, so we're in a good spot at the moment.
And again, the deficit wasn't so much from DCS itself. It was more from, I mean, a lot of our deficit wasn't the special ed costs.
Yes, yes, correct.
Is what, so it was an unexpected.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. It wasn't spending because there was no spending going on in here, trust me.
Yeah, so, but I mean, it wasn't because.
That's right.
Teachers and staff and everybody at DCS.
That's right. So that, this.
So can I just clarify, just on that, part of that is because of the, the budget, the, the budget that we're talking about for this year, you're finishing now, was built two years ago. And so in that time, a lot changed. And it turns out we had some students move in or whatever happened. And so couldn't anticipate that two years ago.
Absolutely.
So this memo, um, I would love for you to take it and read it and, and be prepared to ask Amber questions when she comes on June nineteenth. Um, you know, some of you will read it and it will make perfect sense. Some of you will think you just hand, were handed, you know, something written in a foreign language. Um, it's a lot of finance into her. She said, you know, she speaks this every day, but it's absolutely heavy on, um, finance. But she really goes through and explains the cutoff dates. And this is where the building, you know, thanking your budget secretaries because she gave them a May eighth cutoff date. And now every PO that has to be approved has to go through, um, the SAU for approval. So she has really done a good job getting you ready for year end really early, um, with everyone's help. So, um, June tenth, so the first paragraph, May eighth, the first cutoff date for just regular spending in the schools, like normal procedure if you weren't on a frozen budget. Um, June tenth was the cutoff date for surplus spending. You're not gonna be planning any surplus spending, so that doesn't really pertain to you. But this is SAU-wide, um, process. So this is what would typically happen in a school year. Um, and then she did a synopsis for you of your year-to-date finances as of May thirteenth. Um, and this is where it might be a little bit confusing. But if you look at regular programs, the eleven hundred lines, um, you would, you're ending with twenty-seven thousand in surplus and that's where, those are where a lot of the savings came from, from not spending money, supplies and such. Um, the twelve hundred lines in special ed are, overdrawn three hundred forty-four thousand. Um, co-curriculars, we had an extra thirty-five thousand again because of a frozen budget. So all these extras surplus lines are what saved our budget. Um, guidance in nurse section, there was twenty-one thousand.
Um, honey, how can you tell if it's surplus or deficit?
Um, if, if it's in parentheses, it's overdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I didn't notice.
Yeah, oh, that's okay, sorry, thank you for asking. Um, support service instruction, thirty-three thousand extra. School board expenses, overdrawn fifty-five hundred. I would, didn't look, but I would guess it would be like legal fees. That's usually, there's not a lot in your section. Um, administrative support and secretarial support, an extra twenty-seven thousand there. Um, facilities, don't panic. It shows overdrawn one million thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy. That's because that's gonna be trust fund reimbursements, um, for projects that we've already done. So that will offset, and that's explained later on. Um, transportation, extra sixty-seven thousand because of your bus.
I was gonna say, we don't have a bus.
No. Uh, fringe benefits, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So that could be things like, um, health plan changes or being short paras who had budgeted health plans that we never filled. Um, site improvement, four dollars extra. Food service transport is zero right now, but we will need to do that at the end of the year to offset the, any, um, overspent on the food service. We don't know that yet. Um, and then she just talks about why in those different areas, so you can read through that. Um, and then on the top of the second page, second paragraph, reviewing the revenue report through May tenth. And again, this is not final information. This is her very best detective work as of right this minute. Um, she's thinking you'll have about nine hundred sixty-seven thousand of an anticipated revenue, which. Um, she's thinking you'll have about nine hundred sixty-seven thousand of an anticipated revenue, which that's trust fund, again. Um, so payments for town appropriation, um, is one point five million, that will be collected in full, that's just what your taxes pay for to reimburse us for our budget. Um, there's gonna be a little bit of a shortfall in revenue for tuition preschool from what we thought we would get. Um, bank interest, we're actually making thirty-three thousand more than we thought we would. Um, miscellaneous revenue, we're gonna be short thirty-three hundred, so we probably thought we were gonna get something miscellaneous that didn't end up coming. Adequacy aid was fully collected, so that's a zero. Adequacy state aid, we were off by seventeen cents. Um, catastrophic aid, which is the funding we were just talking about, that's when you have to do three and a half times, and then you get a little bit beyond. Um, but we ended up, um, in a shortfall in that area, so last year, when projections were done, it's done based upon the students that are here right now, and if they're in a placement, we'll say, okay, well, we're gonna project getting reimbursed X amount of dollars. So either the state came up short in a, in the amount of funding, or we had to change in students, and we ended up getting less than we thought we would. Um, and then your IDEA, that's your special ed grant that we were just talking about, um, came in a little bit higher than we projected, thirteen thousand more. Um, Medicaid, um, we had a shortfall of twenty-three thousand, so when you look at the cat aid shortage and the Medicaid shortage, that tells me there were students that moved around that we were anticipating getting reimbursed before that we didn't. Um, and then that's where that transfer from the trust fund, um, is a million dollars, that's gonna offset where it was overdrawn on that page before. So, um, then it all balances out to the number that I gave you, so the ex, estimated expenditure appropriation, one million thirty-eight thousand, and then the revenue surplus that we're anticipating, which is again, that, that tuition money, that, um, the trust fund money, that's why it gets that number so close, but we're still estimating a deficit of seventy-one thousand, um, two fifty-six. So, there will be some things, um, we're hoping that when the final health and dental bills, usually we get some money back from those because of plan changes or, you know, but that stuff's not reconciled until the very end. Um, that's why, until your books are closed and you're ready to set your tax rate, you don't really know what that final number is, um, because there's so many things that still come in at the end of the year. Uh, and then she did point out, you did have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was planned to be put into the special ed trust fund. You may end up funding that when the money is released at the end, you just don't know, sometimes you're surprised and you do get a trust fund and you do end on an okay spot. Um, she will have more up-to-date information when she comes on June nineteenth. Um, cuz we're, we are pretty aggressive with people who haven't submitted bills to us, because we, we go after the vendors, like, hey, I don't have my final bills, can you get that to me, can you get that to me? To try to get as accurate as possible, especially in a year when you're ending in deficit. Um, but your, uh, retainage, I think it was two hundred and ninety thousand, so you should be able to cover your deficit with your retainage and still have some left, hopefully, fund your special ed trust fund. Um, and not have to dip into the special ed trust fund, that would be best-case scenario.
Um, speaking of that special ed trust fund, part of, I mean, even if we can't fund that one hundred fifty thousand that was approved by the town, that was proposed back in November when we thought we were gonna be burning all of our.
Thought we were gonna lose the special ed trust fund.
Sounds like we're not gonna be using our trust fund.
Right, correct, correct, yeah, yeah, it's, we're ending, I think, way back than I thought we were going to. That's my explanation, which is not a finance person's explanation, but I think I understand it enough to give you that little tidbit. Um, so again, go read through that, and then when Amber comes and does the budgeting, um, if you want anything else further explained from her, she'll be happy to do that.
Thank you for all of your work on freezing and keeping a close eye on it for a year.
It's been a stressful year for all of us, so, our school worked really hard, Jess and her team worked tirelessly, like, every time a student sneezed, it was like, we have a change, you know, bring this, update this PO immediately. Um, it was a lot of different meetings, yeah, so. Well, thank. Um, all right, we'll move on to special meeting discussion. Um, obviously, we're not gonna talk specifics about negotiations with the paras, but wanted to give a brief update about moving forward with negotiations with the hope of having a special election. Um. Can I talk about the timing?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay. So, the latest idea, and this was actually an idea from our very wise moderator, was a suggestion that we consider having the special election at the same, on the same day as the state primary. So this is a very heavy election year, so we have a state primary September, we will have the general election several months later. Um, and so having our special election between July and September seemed a little ambitious in terms of getting people to actually come vote, and with spending so much money that we would have to spend if we were hosting our own election. Um, so certainly up for the board to discuss, I think, we, I think there's a huge benefit to having it the same day as the state primary, because the town will already be hosting an election. I'm sure there will be some cost, we will have to pay for the school ballots, we will still have to pay if we wanna do a voter guide, um, or some type of mailing about the election, so that people know, like, if they weren't planning to vote in the primary, you should. Um, and then, you know, we will have to still do a deliberative session and things like that. Um, but sort of wanting to bring that to this group, um, you know, I think in ideal world, I would've loved to have this resolved before the start of the school year. Um, but I think in terms of practicality and not spending, you know, five figures on hosting an election, to me, that makes the most sense, yes.
Um, can, so if it's, if, if yes, we go through this, and if it fails, and that's not gonna change anything, but if it does pass and is approved, then paras would've been working for a few weeks without the new rating, so we could then retroactively prorate their salary or something like that.
That would be part of negotiations, you know, we may negotiate and say, okay, the cost of this is prorated over ten months, or we may say, we're, you know, it's when we cost it out, we have to make those decisions, and that would be part of negotiations.
Possible.
It's a possibility that we, yes, could be retroactive, might take some time, we have to be patient with our, our payroll and HR offices to figure all that out, but.
Uh, I love the idea, I have the cost of doing that and the work involved, something that we've never done as a, as a board, was a little bit, uh.
Daunting.
Daunting, so this is fabulous, great idea.
Does a deliberative session cost something?
So it does in a general year, because we have like, the, the people come and record it, and that costs something. I don't think that we are required to do that.
I think we should record it ourselves to the best of our ability, because it's thousands of dollars to have that set up and record that day. Um, and then you have a, a nominal amount of money that you pay the school district clerk, um, for coming and doing all the stuff that she has to do to get ready for the election, the moderator, I mean, they might as well be volunteers for the amount of money that, you know, it's, it's a small amount of money, but we do need to do that.
And then we would have to pay during the election for the ballot?
Yep, the ballots.
And that's it?
I, I think so, um, cuz the town runs our elections, um, and then we just put up, pay our portion of that, but it's fantastic that we have the expertise of Kelly and, I mean, it was, it was a little nerve, I was a little nervous about trying to run an election on our own when we've never done it, and we were gonna have to ask Kelly to, please let us pay her to help us, but this is best-case scenario, I think.
But that's great too, because if it doesn't cost us that much, some of the, you know, pushback about people not wanting us to do a special election, because the cost will.
Right, and I, and I understand the, the pushback, but at the same time, the voters voted to agree to a special meeting, so, just listen, that you're doing something that you just felt like doing.
Right.
Is that it? Do we have anything else to discuss about that?
I would just say a sense of the board, if everyone's sort of in agreement with moving forward with doing it on, so the negotiation teams know when we meet next week, that that's kind of.
Yeah, so there's like, very specific timelines that we still have to follow, so, oh, we did learn this does have to go before the NBC for their recommendation. I did, um, email the chair of the NBC to let him know that like, this is percolating, and we probably will have to call an NBC meeting um, sometime this summer. Um, but there are specific timelines, so once, you know, if we agree that we're gonna move forward um, on our side, the paras obviously may feel differently. Um, but if we are in agreement about September tenth, then we'll sort of work from there to figure out what the timeline would be.
When we have to post the warrant, when it has to go in the paper, all of that stuff.
Does the NBC have to agree to it?
No, they have to vote to give a recommendation.
So they give us a recommendation, but we can still do whatever we want?
Yeah, so it's the same, like, they will say, does, on the warrant, it will say, does the NBC approve?
Oh, so, but they're, but they're recommending the actual.
Yep, yes, they don't, they're not.
It's not about having a special election, I'm sorry, I was.
No, yeah, 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 so it's, that's for the actual ballot, their recommendation. Yeah, so the school board also, we will have to vote.
Mm-hmm.
Whether we recommend it or not, yeah. Um, so yes, once, we're meeting with the paras, I think, next week.
Next week.
Um, I'll come up with like, a timeline for our next time we talk about this, of like, when the deliberative will be. I think, um, I would propose having the deliberative on a regular school board night, only because there's one warrant article, and it can't be changed, because it's a contract, so it's.
There's not much to deliberate.
There's not much to deliberate, like, people are, I would love people to come, I would love to hear from people, but there's not, we can't change it. It's very prescriptive, the language is prescriptive, it's all.
So it's really disinformant.
Correct.
There were, and there was a lot of conversation at deliberative that, um, you know, was, was unfortunate, questioning how the, how it was costed out, and it would be great to have people come and get those questions answered before the deliberative session.
Yes, that's a great idea.
You know, we can say, like, this is it, here it is, please look at it now, so if you have questions, we can answer them before the deliberative. Um, I don't want people walking away from the deliberative feeling like something's wrong with the contract, when that's not the case.
So, my hope is that negotiations wrap up, you know, I don't know what the timeline will actually look like, but with sufficient time, you know, not bump right up into when we're having deliberative or whatever, we have one meeting, so I would like to be able to get the information out to people, if someone or groups wanted to send a mailer or some sort of informational thing, have time to do all of that.
The deliberative has to be, how come it's sooner than that, but?
Twenty-eight to sixty days, I believe.
At least twenty-eight, no more than sixty. And the warrant is posted fourteen, I think?
Yes, fourteen days before deliberative.
And it has to be in the, posted in the paper, seven days before the, you have to back up all the timelines.
Yeah, so if we're, if we're shooting for September tenth, we would have to have the deliberative before probably like, the beginning of August, and we may have to call a special board meeting, cuz I don't think we typically meet in July, or I don't know if we typically meet the first week of August.
First week of August, you have one regularly scheduled.
So maybe we could do it that, we, if, if negotiations wrap up sooner, we could discuss having deliberative sooner, if we wanted more people to get the word out, but then people are traveling in July, and it's a whole thing, so.
It does not need to be a mailer, there is every year, because the town sends it out, but.
I don't think the voter guide is required, um, but I think there would be a benefit to the board sending out something saying, hello, please vote on this day, this is not a typical school board voting day, but we would love for you to come vote.
And pursuant to the warrant that you approved, we are having a special meeting.
Correct. Yeah, so I think that there would be utility in doing that, I'm happy to do a lot of the labor, I mean, if, 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 there's obviously cheaper and more expensive ways to send out mailers. Um, but I'm happy to figure out a way to do it on the cheap, if we can.
Um, cheap is good.
I'm a pro now at like, bulk mailing, so, but I've got it figured out.
Uh, so sense to the board?
Yeah, sense to the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool, excellent, I think that's it. Oh, now we're at board reports. So, I'm glad I drew myself an arrow, cuz I would've forgotten to go back. PTO update.
We don't have a whole lot, because, you know, as the year wraps up, there's less and less going on, but we did just have our plant sale, which was really successful. Their curators are super cute, they draw a crowd when there's something, so that was fantastic. And we just wrapped up teacher appreciation week, teacher and staff appreciation. Um, I thought it went fantastic, we had so much support this year from families, and then local businesses, and our talented Deerfield bakers, and Poo's and Brew's. So it was just really, a really great week, and I think the teachers and staff were really happy with everything that we were able to offer during this time. And then looking forward to the VMX assembly, please don't rain, we made the cancellation and we moved the date because it was anticipated really bad weather, and then it was a beautiful sunny day, um, but now we're reschedule for Monday, the twentieth, so this is the VMX anti-bolling assembly that focus and PTO are putting on, so hopefully the weather stays good for Monday, as of today, it looks good. And hopefully that will be a great success, as we wrap up the year, I think that might be about it for us.
And if anyone wants coffee tumblers.
Oh, that's eighth grade, but yes.
Oh, sorry.
Coffee tumblers.
I just see your name, and I'm like, PTO.
I have one, very nice.
I can give you the link, and I'll leave it here for our, we'll have Christine get it to you. Thank you so much. Yeah, eighth grade fundraiser is, yeah, it's almost over.
Almost over.
Amazing, thank you, you wanna talk about that a little bit? The eighth grade fundraising is the, um, I don't like the smell of popcorn anymore, but popcorn is a really big success. Um, so, thank goodness that PTO actually purchased that popcorn machine, and PTO has not used it once, only eighth grade has used it, so that's kinda funny. Um, so yeah, they, you, you, it pretty much is, it's gonna cost our kids a hundred and forty dollars.
Wow.
It ranges from zero to one-seventy, depending on how much they participated in PTO fundraisers throughout their whole time here at DCS. Um, so when people see those catalog fundraisers and say, oh gosh, not again, they should really participate, because PTO gives part of profit back to the class fund, so that all adds up after a while, so I wish people knew that, but like you, it's hard to get information out that people can absorb, because it's sometimes just too much information.
I can't even tell the difference between PTO and A three fundraiser, and I'm, I'm buying stuff, so, that's on me.
Well, thanks for all the supporting us.
Absolutely, exact, absolutely.
It's a really ama, it, DFIL is amazing, and I hope you guys know how unique and special you are, because other schools do not come close to knocking the cost down as much as you guys do, so, thank you for everything.
I think the original number was seven-seventy, so it's amazing, or less, I think, worked out pretty good.
Awesome.
And they were, even most people were giving fifty-dollar deposits, so, it feels even lower. Really.
That's awesome, good job, everybody.
Thank you. And how many years do you have till you do it for your daughter? Alexis is third grade, and now she has a few years off, and then we started in, cuz we do the sixth grade fundraising for, um.
Yeah.
So, but if I understand correctly, there won't be a seventh grade trip after this, this is just making up for those that. The six, seven, and eighth grade fundraising all at the same time, we're kind of boggling.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, exact board.
Um, I'd say the main thing that we talked about was the, um, AMI.
AI.
AI, I'm sorry, AI, AI, AMI is who my daughter works for, that's why the M went in, sorry. The AI statement draft, and I don't know if you guys saw it, I think it came through to people, but, um, there has been a committee working on it, Josh is kind of been behind it, and it's.
Brooke had a huge part in it here.
Yeah, and, um, people from all over the district, and it's, um, you know, AI is there, and as he put, you want to embrace it with guidelines. So it's a policy that they've put together, and they would like to, um, roll it out in August, and they're looking to put together like, a generic statement that we will all put in our handbooks, so that it's out there, and then Deerfield could then.
Customize.
Customize it to what Deerfield wants, but they would like to get it into, um, the handbook, so that it, cuz some schools are already, um, into it, and there's a lot of teachers out there that want to get into it, and just, there's no, um, school, New Hampshire school board policy on it yet, so they're trying to get ahead of it, um, so that it can be used effectively.
And appropriately.
Appropriately, yep. So I think that was really.
Hired, hired two people, we hired, yeah, we hired a new, um, was that that? Um, was that the meeting before, did I mix it up? And we have a new bridge program teacher and a new LEA rep.
That's right, sorry.
The LEA rep would be, um, part of her position would be, um, case manager for your high school students for special ed. That's that position, so that, she's great, I met her today, Jess, Jess hired her and I met her today, and she's all set and ready to go.
Cool, she's gonna have a busy year.
She's excited, she said she likes to move around, I said it's a good.
Wahoo!
Anything related to Deerfield does a lot of moving.
Excellent, all right, principals report.
Yes, this covers, uh, our last, our middle, April meeting, April eighteenth, uh, to May fifteenth, to today's. So, um, on April eighteenth, we had our annual family math night, which was a huge success. We had, I think, two hundred or so, uh, people show up for it, and it was great. Thank you to all the families who attended, our dedicated staff who ran the games and activities, and especially to our math specialist. Jamie Oddly, Samantha Corwin, and our math and directionist Stephanie Byer, uh, for all the planning that went into that. Um, Friday the nineteenth, we had our, in our monthly all-school meeting, and the second graders hosted. Uh, they did a wonderful job, uh, in between all of this was April vacation, and then, uh, came back from April vacation, and we've been running ever since. We had our book fair, um, started on Monday the twenty-ninth, followed by, um, our skateboarding unit in PE. Which is always a huge hit and always brings the infamous question of, can we go skateboarding on the playground? No! Um, so, it, oh, it does spark kids' interest, though, in skateboarding, it's such a fabulous unit. Watching kids from first grade all the way to up to eighth grade, doing different things on it, it's really great. Um, on Tuesday the thirtieth, we did have a fire drill, whenever we have a fire drill here, we, I always ask staff to, um, be aware of the volume. And we, we keep getting feedback on different areas, so we are, um, Chris is aware of that, and we give that feedback to, um, Deerfield Fire Department. This evacuation was done on the front lawn, usually we evacuate out to the back, um, because we had a different evacuation. Uh, spot, we did make the announcement to staff and students right before the evacuation, that this would be just a drill. Um, I think there's still some, um, anxiety, uh, over the February vacation, right before the vacation fire drill. Um, so, so the last few have been announced, um, just so kids can get back into the habit of, okay, this is a drill, this is a drill. I mean, if it's the real deal, then it's the real deal, but, um, we're very sensitive to that. So this was a front lawn evacuation, we wanted to get kids to a different spot, um, there's been some talk about blocking hallways on a future evacuation, so. Um, and then we had our annual spring art show as well, we had lots of folks in and PTOs. Uh, ha, um, host, uh, had snacks.
Yep.
Um, provided, uh, drinks and snacks for kids, um, and families. On Thursday, uh, the second and Friday the third, we had Tricky Tray in the house with, um, and on Friday, there was a spaghetti supper hosted by the Heritage Commission. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't even really know, I was here, but I don't know how that went.
I think okay, I think they would have liked to have had more people, but it's, we used to do things like that years ago, and then it stopped, so trying to. Get that going again.
Yeah, yeah, because we have our annual, we do the spaghetti supper right before the.
Exactly, right.
Um, this year we did a pizza, uh, pizza night, but, um, yeah, so, uh, that was, uh, tricky, it's always fun to have Tricky Tray in the house.
Tricky Tray went amazingly.
Awesome.
We brought in over ten thousand dollars for that, so, yeah, really.
And I won two things.
You did!
I won Mr. Trong's basket.
Oh, you did? I wonder if he knows that.
He will.
He'll be thrilled, um, yeah, and it's always a great, uh, you know, builder in the school, too, everybody is participating magnets and advisories. And, um, all the kids, they all pull together a basket, and we appreciate families, they, the kids come up with the theme. And then the, the, really it's the families and the parents that, uh, parents and guardians that pr- provide the materials for it, so it's always.
Office baskets.
I didn't win. Trish wants her credit.
Did.
Yeah, the beautiful basket, yes, we did. Like a relax and take a break. Treat yourself theme, that's what we did. Um, all right, onward, Saturday the fourth, our southeast, was the southeast district band and chorus festival. Our, our band and chorus students participated in that, it was at Oysterville Middle School, they came back very jealous of that.
I was gonna say.
That's the wrong school.
They, uh, it is such a beautiful school. Um, on Monday, uh, the sixth, we started our teacher staff appreciation week, we were spoiled by PTO and the Deerfield families. The theme was thank you for raising the bar, so everything was centered around, um, different around the bar, and not that kind of bar. It was a coffee cart bar, and a flower bar, a salad, big, a big potato soup bar.
Not a bar bar.
Uh, we had a treat in our mailboxes, which the school board also, if you stop at the, um, coffee room, you will, there's a little treat in the mailbox for you. Um, and then we ended our week with a dessert bar, and, uh, it was over the top, it was wonderful, our staff felt very appreciated. It was, it was great, thank you to our PTO and to the many Deerfield families that, uh, helped us. On Monday the thirteenth, our sixth graders left for Merrill Vista, they, um, came back today, very, s- very, 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 very tired. And, um, most of them were picked up pretty early, the bus got in around one thirty, and families started coming around too to pick the kids up. Um, our seventh graders left today, so this was the trip that seventh grade took because of what Nicole was saying. Uh, during the COVID years, they missed, the, a couple of the kids missed out on the overnight, our fifth graders always went to Boston and did an overnight. Our sixth graders, um, did the nature camp and stayed overnight, so they've done it for a few years, and they're ready to turn it back over to sixth grade. So we did, uh, so sixth grade went, seventh grade went today, they did an overlap today, sixth grade came back and seventh grade was there until Friday. Um, and then there, the next year, the seventh grade will not, um, be participating in an overnight trip, they will do their end-of-the-year trips. Um, that they've traditionally done, which is a Canterbury Lake trip and a trip to Wallace Sands Beach. Um, so their fundraising will not, they'll, they'll be kind of like six, fundraising for sixth grade, then fundraising for eighth grade. So that will help out with that there, there as well. Our baseball, track, and girls on the run, uh, season is in full swing. And, um, Mrs. McConnell has been attending co-ground transition meetings for our students receiving special education services. We've done that for years with Concord, where, um, the pa, the families go to the high school and meet the, the tr- special education team. And the transition and top, the kids go, it's always such a great experience, Lisa usually comes back in tears talking about how. She's known these kids since preschool, and here they are, graduating from eighth grade and coming to high school. So it's always a feel-good meeting for her, so she can brag about, um, you know, the students and how far they've come. And parents are able to share, parents and guardians are able to share their hopes and dreams for their childhood, um, for high school. So it's always a good, and so we, like I said, we've done it for years with Concord, and we started this year with Co Ground as well. Um, and then upcoming, um, on Monday, as Nicole mentioned, we do have our rescheduled PTO focus sponsored VMX Anti-Bullying Assembly. Um, Nicole sent me the weather report for today with the screenshot of what it's supposed to be on Monday, so we're just hoping. Because it literally was, the forecast before was rain, 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 and it ended up being cloudy, 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 sunny, so. Um, we have a ton of end-of-year field trips that I'll review at my next, at the next meeting, I'll give you an update on who went where. Um, but a big one that's coming up that I want, um, to make sure I mention is that our fifth graders are gonna be going to Starbase. Which is in Pembroke, New Hampshire, it is, uh, run by the Department of Defense. It is open to all fifth graders in the state of New Hampshire, it is free of charge, except for transportation. Um, so, so they're, they're, they just opened their doors, I know that the SAU went over for a visit.
I didn't get to go, but Jack went, yeah.
Oh, Jeff, finally, my, our superintendent, and it's state-of-the-art, um, lap, basically, our fif- the fifth graders will. Starbase stands for Science and Technology Academy, is reinforcing basic aviation and space exploration, that just rolls off the tongue yesterday. But they will spend twenty-five hours in, uh, immersed in STEM education over a course of five days. Um, so our fifth graders will be going this week, uh, this upcoming week, and then the week after as well. We've divided in Concord, because they can only hold, host a certain number of students, so one fifth grade class will be going with half of another. And then the other class will go with the other half, so we, that's how we, that's how we accommodated that. Um, but they will have lessons that could include things like robotics and rocketry and engineering and physics and chemistry and technology and aerospace. Um, like I said, the only cost is transportation, the Department of Defense pays for everything, all the supplies and materials. And the teachers that are the, the teachers, there are teachers hired there that do the teaching, um, our teachers are become participants, so. They're very excited for that, and, um, we're excited for them to have that experience, so.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to policy. Fabulous policy committee.
Ashley said, this is committee, yeah, there's a committee of two. They're doing all the work.
All right, uh, so I, we were looking at, um, we, the committee, we're looking at. The agenda and the, the ones that were required were not moved up to a third reading, is that correct? So that we figured that was the case, so we would just sort of move them, and I think as we were thinking, they were happy to move all of them, um, so we would propose. Except that, um, some of them need a little bit of, um, kind of tweaking the formatting.
Fill in the blanks too, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three high schools needed to be included in that, but we figured that would be something that could be taken care of, if we just approve them here, then that can all be.
Yeah, they can fill in the blanks, and sometimes they have blanks where titles go, and because each pla, each school is unique, so.
Right, um, so then, uh, four, maybe we, well, maybe I'll just, um, move them.
Top block.
Um, I was going to break them into. All right, no, I guess they're all, there, yeah, there are, so, the ones, as we look at that list, IKF, and we talked about this last time, IKF, IKFA. ILBAA, IMBD, LEB, those are all, um, high school-related ones. And so those would be cleaned up, like you were saying, and then the other ones, um, had some other pieces to them. But I can't remember exactly, but we did, we did went through, and we just thought that the NHSBA's version made sense, and that was the ACEs, the JLDBA, KB, and KED. Anything you want to add about that before we just move them? Well, I don't, I'll move them now, then we can talk about them, so I'd like to move, uh, IKF, IKFA, ILBAA, IMBD, and LEB. Um, to be cleaned up by the SAU when they get to it. Can I read a second on that?
Second. Kendra.
There's already language in one of them that says, you know, just, it's gonna abide by the high school, so it's like. One half says that.
Yes, and then, that's it, yeah.
You're done.
Copy and paste, yep.
Um, okay, so, all in favor of moving those, or moving to a third, or?
No, they're, they've been on here three times.
They've been on here three times, okay, so we're just approving them with you filling in the blanks.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and, um, then I would also move. The other ones, there was one, I think, that ACE.
There's only one ACE.
Only one ACE.
You had them, you had them separated, yeah, but there's only one.
Um, so then would I need to move AC?
ACE's NHSBA version.
Which would then.
Yes, right, because.
Retract one.
Because you're still gonna have ACE, but you're not gonna have it separated by five oh four and LEP, that's gone, old's. It's cool.
All right, and then that other batch would be, I would move ACE, JLDBA, KB, and KED, uh, again, to the SAU to.
Uh, second.
Any questions about those ones?
Being cleaned up by just taking the.
Essentially, and like when there's yellow, if you look at the NHSBA version, there's something like yellow blanks, and those just need to be filled in appropriately with the appropriate, you know.
Title or name or whomever.
The KB one was the title one.
Right.
Yeah, we were still a little.
Family engagement.
About, not concerned, that's not the wrong, but questioning that, because.
Yeah, so I think that would me, so, right, part of the conversation we had last time was maybe what exa, how exactly we have been meeting that in the past. And so with this, they would, you would need to be looking at that and just kind of, what would be appropriate to meet that policy. The other questions we had on that one, or in the, okay.
Um, all in favor of the motion, there is a pending motion.
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor of moving the ones Nate listed.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed?
No.
Okay.
All right, so going beyond now, down to the third reading section, um, we still haven't seen a high school assignment yet, and so that's gonna sit there and limbo for a little bit longer.
Yeah, I did, um, get a draft from Dean that I will upload to the drive.
We can get back to this after, but sort of on that note, if we, you know, approve all of these now, is there another batch that's gonna come up?
There sure will be.
You didn't think you were getting off this easily.
Um, okay, so then, the DIA and GCG are in that next section, and we thought that the NHSBA versions cleaned them all up very well. Just sort of said, like, you know, we will follow the law, basically, kind of smoothed them out, and so those.
Did you, you know what, it just occurred to me, I didn't print it, did you have Amber's edited version in the drive, the DIA? That just flagged me, because we just did that in Pembroke, and she, she did like a two-page policy on that, that our auditors wanted us to have, so. Can we hold on that? I just realized, I didn't think I saw it in yours, okay.
All right, then, um, I'll move GCG, part-time and substitute staff. As the NHSBA version.
Just that one?
Just that one.
Okay, second.
And you notice there's a typo in that as well.
That was in our current version, not the NHSBA's version, so we'll be replacing that typo.
Right here, too.
Yeah.
All right, I'll second.
I already seconded. You can third. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
All right, and then on to the nineteen nineties, there were some different things to kind of, uh, to chew on for us as a board, I think, and so, um. Again, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'll try to take a stab at this, so they'll go in order on the list, so GBG. Um, we thought that, again, the NHSBA version was good, because it, uh, would just clean up the language.
And these are required or recommended?
Required, some of them are recommended, they're mostly recommended, it's not, they weren't, uh, there was one that we talked about, um, last time. Which was like the pledge of allegiance one, where it says federal, uh, you know, mandates that will have a constitution day. Um, but, but the policy from New Hampshire doesn't, isn't required, but we do have to follow federal law, and so it's kind of like. Do you need a policy to just say we're gonna follow federal law, not really, so that was something that we cleaned up as well, but most of them are, they're not required policies.
But you would recommend having them.
Case by case, but, most of these are, yes, I think most of them were happy to update, we didn't see anything that needed to be, or that we thought would be retracted or.
Rescinded.
Rescinded, thank you. Um, and so for GBG, we'll start with that one, I would move the NHSBA version, just because it cleaned that one up. So I'll start with that, maybe we'll go case by case here, so I'll move the GBG version, I'm sorry, the NHSBA version of GBG.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right, and then, let me, let's do the JFAA as well, because that's another sort of easy one, that was the student residence declaration of, you know, do you live in town? That was pretty straightforward, so I will, uh, move the NHSBA version of JFAA as well.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, so now the ones that are a little bit more interesting, one of them is IMDA, we'll take a look at that, and I think, um, there were two drafts. That we did, were kind of tweak a little bit, and we put into the drive, did you see those?
Yep.
So, the IMDA was one of those that is called, um, patri- patriotic something or other.
Patriotic exercises.
Patriotic exercises, thank you. Um, in that policy, in the version, so in the, in the current, um, Deerfield one, it just says that students will stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, that's basically it. Um, but the NHSBA version says, uh, federal law, you know, talks about Constitution Day, talks about, um. There was another one in there, Constitution Day.
Citizenship Day.
Citizenship Day, thank you, and there will be some curricular activities around those. In a similar way, there'll be curricular activities around Memorial Day and Veterans Day as patriotic federal holidays. And also goes on to say that standing and reciting the pledge of allegiance will be optional, but at least students, if they're choosing not to, they will respect those who are. Reciting the pledge of allegiance, and they add one more at the end, which is about. I forget, oh.
John's.
John's, John. John's, John, what was it?
John Stark Day.
Stark Day, right, John Stark Day, which we, we, none of us had ever heard of that one. So we, we did a little bit of kind of adjusting, we took out the John Stark one. We also um did look at the federal holidays and thought that um recognizing, you know, patriotic holidays certainly made sense. Um, we added one piece there about talking about uh Juneteenth, since that's, since this uh model policy came out, that's uh been a new federal holiday that's been added. And um recognizing in a patriotic way, you know, things that are great for our country, that seemed to fit right in uh for that. And it sort of added, I think, a little bit of, in a similar way to Memorial Day and Veterans Day, some sort of a kind of curricular piece to, to recognizing um those federal holidays. So I'll start by moving that one, our ver- our, and if, we can, we can change this if we want to, this would be getting into amendments if people wanted to. But um, so I'll move the, the draft version of IMDA.
The committee draft version.
Committee draft of IMDA.
I will second. Yes, keeping it simple for you. Uh, any discussion?
I guess I'm not finding where the draft is.
It says committee in parentheses when you open it. The drive.
Is it also in the packet as well?
Yep.
Do you want to look at my paper version?
Yes.
It's in her submitted packet.
I guess one of the questions I would ask is, I'd ask this.
It's in um third reading, in the folder, third reading, not third reading nineteen nineties.
No, it's not in the second reading.
It's in third reading.
How do you feel?
Did you see the Juneteenth addition?
Requirements on.
Can I read it, is that okay? Um, so there's an addition of a paragraph that says during the week preceding Juneteenth, the district will devote time for exercises of a patriotic nature, including a discussion of the meaning and history of the Civil War, the Thirteenth Amendment and Reconstruction.
Part of our rationale behind that was the, um, in a similar way, they have that kind of language for Memorial Day and for Veterans Day. And then um in, at least in the last couple of years, I think school has ended before Juneteenth. And I looked at our calendars and school doesn't go to Juneteenth anymore, so.
Right.
So, you know, whatever, what, whatever kind of recognition would be up to the school.
I mean, it's a little bit more comprehen- Memorial Day and Veterans Day just require a patriotic exercise of patriotic nature, including a discussion of the words, meaning and history of the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner. This is a little more defined and curricular in nature with, including a discussion of the meaning and history of the Civil War, the Thirteenth Amendment and Reconstruction. And that's a little more age-specific too, you wouldn't want to just, that wouldn't be a K eight.
Did you know the Pledge of Allegiance with students staying at school actually happened because of the Chicago World Trade? That's when it first happened.
No, I did not know that.
That's interesting. Yeah, I wonder if we could just change what the discussion is, if we could just change it to something about the holiday, why the holiday exists.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I can ma- mention of it, but it's not as, it's more Frank K eight friendly, right.
Kind of how we did um.
John Stark Day?
Constitution.
Yeah, 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 right.
And it was just our classes, like I did, it was appropriate for my class.
Age-appropriate, yeah.
And then Veterans Day, Memorial Day, we usually had a magnet for those.
Right, the, the breakfast or something.
Yeah. I don't know the best way to phrase it, but sort of, I mean, it is a new holiday, so sort of explaining why the holiday exists, why the federal government passed this holiday, um.
I don't know, you're, I'm not on the policy committee.
So do we need, I don't know that we need, so the first, the paragraph about Memorial Day and Veterans Day has exercises of a patriotic nature. I'm not sure the Juneteenth would need an exercise of a patriotic nature. I agree with you, it's more of a discussion about the holiday itself.
I think you could just say um devote time for exercises, including a discussion of the meaning and history of the holiday.
Devote time for exercises.
Or lessons rather than exercises?
Time for discussion.
We'll devote time for a discussion.
Yeah.
In the form that takes in whatever grade would be.
Yeah, I think whatever is appropriate for the grade or.
And if you have a school-wide, some.
Yeah, of everybody, yeah, yeah. Okay. Great.
Can you read that one more time?
Yes, during the week preceding Juneteenth, the district, district will devote time for a discussion of the meaning and history of the holiday.
I like it.
Cool. Um, so what do we have to do for that?
Move the amended for me.
Okay. Do you want to move the amended version?
Sure, I'll move the amended, uh, then move, move the, uh, what are we on, IMDA as amended.
I will second. Further discussion about the amendment. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I heard, I think I heard it, I think I.
Uh, all right, great, then, okay, so then on to IMG. Is that the class time one or the?
Animals.
That's the animal, all right, so that was the one that we wanted to consult, really, we wanted to consult with the school on that. We didn't feel like we were in a place to necessarily make that decision without input from the school. I'm sure, I'm sure there, there's some schools in New Hampshire that really are pretty strict about not allowing animals.
Yes, no, a lot of, I can't see in Deerfield either, but there are schools with like no fur policies and that kind of, yeah. Well, that policy does not say that.
No, the policy does not.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the board ever had a policy, but.
Classroom pets. Right, this is for like, well, maybe, well, it could be both ways, yeah, we were told no class pets, basically, except snakes. But anyway, um, yeah, no for class pets, because this is also, we were wondering, kids bringing them in for share or something. And maybe it's not part of it, but I, that's how I was kind of reading it too, for, when kids came, like.
Yeah.
Brought their puppy in for share.
Do you want the admin team and the school nurse to come up with a recommendation?
Yes, please, for sure.
If they want a policy.
Yeah, like it's possible that they say, we don't care and we don't need this, but.
Likely. I think you should, I think you probably should have a policy to make sure everyone's clear.
I would say to you here, if those animals are waiting in school for an extended period, should we house, I would say that's a classroom pet.
Right.
Right?
Yeah. Even some that came in for share.
And not allowed to roam freely, gee, I let my wana roam freely.
Turtles used to roam freely.
These two, these two, back in the day, animals roam free.
They're going to write the policy and says, all animals welcome to roam free at any time.
He had a huge, and you would, you'd see it walking down the hallway, like he was just. Yep, getting its exercise for the day. So maybe it needs to be in two parts too, like classroom.
And visitors.
Pets and classroom visitors.
There's, was there not a cow for a talent show or something?
Horse, a horse.
Horse, that's right, I knew there was something large.
We've had chickens, sheeps, goats, they've all been here, it's all been here.
Yep.
We have a dog.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get a recommendation for that one.
Uh, and then JICDR is one where, I brought this up last time, that is between, it's an MOU between us and the police department. So how do we get that rolling?
It's on my list.
Same thing, okay.
To roll. Yeah, it's, we have to reach out to the police department, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Hopefully they're, they're on board.
Um, all right, and then that brings us down to IIB, which was class size. And that was one that we posed another draft, um, really didn't change much other than the numbers that were in there. And um we thought that um, especially just both being teachers, you know, classes can be too small, it is a thing. And so the, for the kindergarten, we thought that number might have any, might, might be on the, on the cusp of too small. So we did, and for a number of them, increased the numbers up to whatever they are in there, sixteen to nineteen.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Fifteen to eighteen for kindergarten grades one, two and four. And up to four, sixteen to twenty, and I think we left the others.
No, five, six, seven, eight is twenty-two. Kindergarten was fifteen to eighteen, grades one through four sixteen to twenty, and five through eight is twenty-two.
Well, I don't have the other one in front of me, what were the old ones?
Um, kindergarten was fourteen, first grade was sixteen, second, third and fourth were eighteen, and five through eight was twenty-one.
Okay.
So not drastic changes, but.
Actually did a deep dive into all the towns around us, and we're so much lower than everybody else around us. And a lot of them just went by the state guidance, which is twenty in kindergarten, actually twenty all the way up from kindergarten through fourth grade and twenty-five, five through eight. And then like I lived in the Oyster River and Concord, but all much higher. The only one that was kind of low was Green, but even more, it's high.
So I'll move the um drafted for, the committee draft of uh policy IIB.
Second.
Um, I ask a question, why did you do the well fifteen to eighteen?
Yeah, the range, right, if it's not an upper limit, yeah, it was something that we saw, actually, I think on the data you found that you sent to us, and it seemed, I don't know, just a little bit of, a bit of flexibility, I don't know. Yeah. Um, I, but I think it also does get at the idea of a class of, of twelve is almost like too small. So it's not just an upper limit, it is almost like a target, it would be good to have sort of a critical mass of, you know, um, it probably could be a little bit smaller than that. But it felt like a range kind of conveyed that. But we can certainly change it, we're not attached to it.
I think the range feels fine to me.
Yeah, I was just, I.
Yeah, curious, yeah, for sure.
So we don't need to separate, it's if grades, it's one through four, okay.
Say one through four.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Do we have to, we don't have to make an amendment for that, just doing grades one through four, because that's sort of a.
Right, just a formatting.
Formatting, okay. So all in favor of approving the committee drafted IIB policy?
Aye.
All opposed? One opposed?
Um, and policy BEDH, we did not propose to change, we looked at it, but we, it made sense to leave it alone. It's a relatively new, I think it was last year we approved it, so it didn't seem like it was. And it's in line with, you know, updated RSAs and laws and all that, so it didn't seem like it needed to be changed.
Yes, and I, it wasn't due for a change, I brought it or I added it because there was discussion about whether we wanted to increase public comment time. Um, because I know the Board of Selectment increased to five minutes. And as I said at our prior meeting, we still have longer time for public speaking, so we have three minutes in, at the front, three minutes at the end. Um, so we have six minutes, I don't think people would enjoy if we adopted Board of Selectmen having public comment all at the end. Um, I don't think that would be a very popular way to go about this. So I think having three in the front and three in, in the end makes the most sense. Out for discussion.
We're waiting for you to make a motion out of inconsistent.
Well, you don't need to.
Oh.
Not changing anything.
You don't have to do anything.
You can, you can um make a motion to reaffirm your policy.
Do we have to?
Well, it was on your agenda, you should probably do something with it.
Move to reaffirm BEDH.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you for all of your work, Policy Committee. Great job. I was gonna say, the next batch is.
We started looking at the list thinking, well, maybe we can pick some out ourselves and then like, that doesn't make sense.
Well, yeah, we, and we'll just let. Ask, Ashley has a master spreadsheet, so what we did was update the ones required by law, and then we went backwards, like working through the nineties and working, so that we had some of each on. But we got the spring update yesterday, so for new legislation, there's a whole new list of them that came from School Board Association, so those, some of those will be on there for sure.
Okay. Do you have anything for informational items?
I do not.
I do not either. Back to public comments, but there is no public here. So I will say that we offered public comments and there was no takers. Um, we do need to go into non-public session, so I will make a motion to enter non-public session pursuant to NHRS A ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letters A and B.
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
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 All right. We don't have to kick anyone out, we do have to turn off the recording?
Jess, you don't have to stay.
I was gonna leave, because you.
We're kicking you out.
You didn't have to stay.
You didn't have to stay.